Retired postmaster and a former selectman and many other hats, especially the Chair of the Advisory Committee, passed away yesterday. My heart goes out to his family. And if we could just please say a prayer in a moment of silence for Mr. Ron Daxson. Thank you, everyone. First selectmen shall entertain a motion to acknowledge a month of reports for the memorial committee for 3/23/54.
I will make that motion?
Any discussion? Having none all in favor?
Aye.
Announcements, we had read last week, another congratulations to residents Mark Ledoux, Dr. Mark Ledoux, who was presented with the Historical Commission's Annual Preservation Award for his restoration of Overlook Farm. Dr. Ledoux's ambitious work to restore and preserve Overlook Farm is commendable and his attention to historical detail is echoed in the two new post in Dean Barnes and the faithful conservation of the farmhouse, the Commission stated. Any other announcements? Anybody wish to address the board? If you don't mind, if we could just take this out of order so we don't have to have much discussion after, we can just leave. Item number three, Dollar General property discussion, it's come to the board's attention that the Dollar General is looking to gift the land to the west of said property. It's been disclosed as wetland. I don't know if this board wants to take any action or let them...
Yeah, I saw the email this afternoon.
See what happens with... They were looking for Butters to possibly bid on the property. We'll see where it goes and keep it on the back burner.
Yep.
All right. Any other Karen issues that the board needs to deal with this evening? I don't think there was any. There was an email from Mr. Siri in regards to a sign.
Regarding what?
There's a citizens petition for a posting of a sign for all meetings. He reached out to the elementary school. They did that around four or five years ago at a cost of thirty-seven hundred. He's possibly requesting a sign on the common.
My only suggestion was that with the sharp nature of the common and the type of sign that they were looking at, that to just don't go again.
I agree one hundred percent.
So, what I offered was that the church has a portable sign that we use, so we take it up and take it down.
We have a portable sign. We've been doing it right along.
For elections?
But this is...
Does that mean we have a sign for elections?
Yeah, but it's cumbersome. And then this thing that we have has the letter thing and it has a little base to it.
Little ones on the wheels?
Yeah, it's not on wheels, but it's really easy to manage versus what we have. So, it might be easier so. Art J, I asked him, do you just stop by and show Mike that type of sign?
It's a hundred bucks, a hundred fifty bucks.
Yeah.
I have two of them.
Yep, exactly.
All right, item number one, joint meeting with the advisory committee brings us into item two. I'd like to start with a special town meeting warrant. Everyone has a packet. So, this board hasn't recommended what our, well, stated what our opinions are, if we support or not support it. So, the board, I guess, can take that vote after discussion with the advisory committee. Article one, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash to the Union sixty-one preschool program account or take any action relative thereto. Something we have to do because of the, I've seen emails saying not to use the word theft, but it is what it is. It was theft.
Well, and then town council would say that since it's, maybe it was something new, since it was something I didn't understand where it was. That's fine. We put lots.
Okay. So, the advisory committees take through the chair.
Why are we taking, why can't we take this out of their schools money?
It didn't come from us. We, the insurance that we got went into free cash, so this is basically being paid for by the insurance that we received.
Someone want to make a motion to second it and then we can discuss it?
What motion do you want? Are you looking to support?
I think they're just trying to go through the cereal.
To support it or not support it?
Right, so I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to support article one as written.
Someone want to second that?
I'll second.
Bob, second, second. Are they in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Barbara, you want?
So, a quick question from a standpoint of format for the, there's the warrant that gets published from a standpoint of just the posting in a public place, and then there's the warrant book. Do we want recommendations on the warrant itself or just in the warrant book?
We usually just do in the warrant book, so it's not cumbersome.
I just want, I just want to make sure that that's what we're doing.
It's never done on warrants.
For those that have not heard, I want to be the first to let you know that our town accountant has retired effective last Friday, so we no longer have a town accountant. So, that's going to make it even more interesting.
What's the interim plan?
We're working on it.
I've been working on it all day today.
And Friday when we were aware of it.
And Clarence has done some work on it. We're very well aware and we're doing work on it and waiting for phone calls to come back.
So, you've got some people lined up possibly?
I was very optimistic on the list that we have.
The list that I had.
It's a good list.
This is a bad time.
One hundred percent.
She's had a health problem since last incident.
Let's leave it at retirement and move on. So, I'll entertain a motion to support article one as a board selectman.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We good for number two? Number two, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash to the Union sixty-one preschool program account, take any action relative thereto. Again, same incident, amount of thirty, thirty.
Someone want to make a motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion to accept that as written.
Anybody have any questions on it?
Okay. So, is your motion to accept or support?
We accept, we accept it. We support, accept it.
We should say recommend.
Do we want recommend or we want support?
We support.
We support.
We generally support, yep.
Entertain a same motion to support article two?
I'll make that motion.
Can we block vote these? Can we block vote article one through article six, which are all, all related to the, to the loss to the town for the sake of time?
We can leave that to the discretion of the moderator?
No, I mean here.
Right now.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Fine.
So, I'll make a motion to...
Axwell, one through five.
One through five.
Yeah, I'm sorry, one through five. So, for, on behalf of the advisory committee, I'd like to make a motion to support articles one through five related to the loss to the town and reimbursement from the insurance funds as written.
Is this the money that's being returned from the theft?
It was returned.
Certified on the free cash. Okay, just so everybody knows and everybody out there knows what we're talking about. This is money that came back. We had an employee that took money from the town and this is the money we get, we got back. Did we get three thousand also from her retirement fund somewhere in your studio?
Oh, on scan, excuse me.
That was article two, okay.
Well, she's legally bound to repay as well, so I don't know how that'll work. I'm assuming...
She's what?
I think legally bound to pay, pay back the money.
But I think that goes to the insurance company that now that they've settled it, any funds that come from her will go back to them.
The insurance asset, Chase, sir, okay.
So, you guys have a motion? I hear a second.
Someone want to second that?
Well, he did second, but you can't hear his seconds right now.
Okay, Bob, second, is anybody in favor?
I'll pay.
Aye.
I'll abstain because of water.
What?
Bob, he wants to abstain on article four, just on article four. He's on the water commissioners.
All right, so for the sake of time, and Linda's actually dealing with that account issue now, so I'll entertain the same motion.
Same.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're all in favor too.
Item number six, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash to the snow and ice, take any action relative thereto. We have not gotten a figure yet from Cindy, but we did allow through both board and committee the ability for them to deficit spend.
And I'll give that thing to her tomorrow, she's...
Now, Steve, our board recommended we approve twenty thousand and go over the seventy-five thousand deficit, but now I understand it's up to twenty-nine thousand, thereabouts.
We didn't...
Where'd the other nine thousand come in?
I don't know. It's the first I've heard of it.
Well, it's over twenty thousand, right?
I don't know.
I've been given almost twenty-eight thousand and then I heard twenty-nine thousand, so I don't know.
Like I said, you're the first to tell me. That's a Cindy question.
Okay, I remember seeing this board...
So, I think, I think his point is that procedurally, there's an issue with that.
We didn't get it.
And we need to ensure that there's some more refined manner of communicating when we're gonna...
Which there usually is, that's why I'm surprised. You're sure it's over that?
Yeah, well, we only approved twenty thousand, right?
So, we know.
And I know it's up to twenty-eight, twenty-nine, so we didn't, you know, it didn't come across with our board to say, you know, we need another nine thousand, so.
It's never been back, but I know.
All right, was someone going to find that out and report back to us?
Yes, I'll, I'll talk this into tomorrow.
We're going to go through the procedures and take the steps that we need to follow suit.
It'd be great to have an explanation of where it came from.
Well, you're going to get that, right Karen?
Yeah, I will.
Someone want to make a motion that we're going to accept?
I'll make a motion to replace the article.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
It's already placed.
Yeah, or support the article.
Someone want to second that?
Second.
All in favor? And we're going to put a figure in, I guess, at town meeting.
Steve? We will have the figure before, but we'll probably have it for Tuesday's meeting.
Okay.
Did you take the vote?
All in favor?
Aye. Kind of a procedural or format question. We have some dollar values that immediately follow the article. Do we want to put a space in there and, and put estimated at or something or words to that effect so that no one thinks that it's locked into that number in case there's some minor accounting or value issue?
Maybe.
Not on the warrant, but for the...
On the handout, maybe.
I'm just saying, because the dollar values even on there can be problematic if we discover that there's some sort of error between now and town meeting.
Well, we can amend it on the floor.
Yeah.
Through the motion, just the motion itself is amending. Me personally, as a taxpayer, I'd like to see the dollar amount on there.
Well, that's why I'm just saying, show it as an estimate.
Through the handout at the town meeting, though.
Right.
I'd want to see it instead of being surprised. And this late in the year with the snow done, she should have that figure.
Well, we'll get that figure before we print and then we'll put it in.
Yes.
Yeah, that's...
For the, for the meeting.
Keep it simple, okay.
So, I'll entertain a motion to support article six.
Some move.
Second, any discussion? Having none all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Number seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money to the stabilization account or take any action relative thereto. This is to replace the funds used for the fleet repair, replace account that we did last year, well, technically.
I have to check that figure too, because now, yeah, check...
What do we put in, what do we put in for, was it sixty, sixty-five? Was firm sixty?
Sixty, it was sixty, okay.
Did you say you had to check with Betty?
Well, I said, I, that was what I...
Sixty comes to mind, Bob, you remember that? This is for the fire truck and the dump truck, we borrowed money out of the account.
Barbara, do you have the spreadsheets that we got from the town clerk?
That was to get back that money from the state.
The town clerk, the town clerk from the annual and the special town meeting, do you have a copy of the spreadsheet?
Remember?
Yeah, for the two trucks.
I have it, Barbara, don't worry about it. Thank you for looking. I just know you generally have them handy.
Somebody want to make that a motion that we accept the sixty thousand?
I'll make a motion that we accept a movement of sixty thousand dollars to replace the money in the stabilization that was taken out at the special.
Someone want to second that?
I'll go.
Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Everybody understand?
Okay. Entertain a motion to support article second.
Some move.
Second, any discussion? Having none all in favor?
Aye.
Article eight, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from the overlay surplus for the purpose, which probably say a surplus account, for the purpose of funding a zero balance overlay account for fiscal year oh-four, some two hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-eight cents.
And that's, by the way, that's, that was from the assessors.
I would hope so.
Why are we just, why is it so far back in two thousand and four?
An abatement? That's a Phil question.
I went in and asked for an explanation. And Rodney said it was to cover property tax abatement, Phil wasn't in the settlement. That's what I wrote down. You can, if you need more info, I can get it from him. He can...
An abatement from twelve years ago?
It's entirely possible that if somebody was going back and doing either back taxes or like a probate scenario, if the person who had previously owned the property was eligible for the abatement, say they were senior, senior unlimited income, what have you, it's possible that when they were doing the reckoning for them, they'd be eligible for the abatement.
That's what I understood.
Okay, someone want to make a motion to accept that? Should I recuse myself because I'm on the Board of Assessors? Okay.
Yes. So, you're going to abstain?
Yeah.
You want to make that motion, Barbara? Someone want to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Onward. Entertain a motion to support article eight?
Some move.
Second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Article nine, same, just a different year, oh-seven, the amount of one thirty-five eighty-six.
Somebody want to make a motion to accept that? Support it?
I'll make a motion to support it.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Onward.
Entertain a motion to support article nine?
Some move.
Second, any discussion? Having none all in favor? All right, that's it for the special onward to the annual.
I see there's a little typo.
Where's that?
In Brookfield, so we'll fix that when we're back to you.
Good eye. All right, article one, to see if the town will vote to accept the annual report. Can we just pass over these or we don't have to?
These are the, these are the standard blocks.
The block ones, well, one and two are standard, three, all the blocks are standard.
All right, and good job highlighting the change in article eleven, even though it's part of the standard blocks. It did highlight the, the change in level that was requested by the committee. Or not eleven, I'm sorry, it's nine.
Wow, yeah, well...
So, my question is on article eleven. We don't even have that co-op anymore, do we?
No, I talked to Cindy, she said it's kind of, it's not there, but it's there, but it isn't there. That makes any sense to you?
Is there any money to go for it?
I heard there was no money being swapped back and forth, but we still have the equipment. And towns, if someone wants to borrow it, they still come down and get it. That's about all I got.
So, you're recommending to keep that?
I think we need to clarify the, I think before we finalize this, we need to clarify the status of the regional highway equipment cooperative.
Equipment pays everything, what's left, who's getting paid, who's not getting paid.
Well, there's no, there's nothing left of the grant, no one's getting paid to manage it.
No, just so it's rectified and make sure that is so.
So, should I check with Cindy tomorrow?
Let's see, we're going to move it all together. Just to me, it's basically stating that it's a revolving fund, which means there's money, and Dave's saying there's no money.
Well, I'm saying there's no, I'm saying there's no money. She was, she said she was not getting paid, so I don't know what else is, what else is taking place. That's why you should clarify it.
Yeah, I'll call her tomorrow.
But we were bringing money in through the grant through the town of Brookfield who's managing it.
I guess the question is, are we still applying for any grants to continue to support the program?
I guess, no.
Well, that's a no, right Clarence?
That's what I understood.
I've understood that for a couple of years.
Yep.
I was going to say if the, if the, we have the equipment...
We do, which is, we got some of it.
And if the cooperative no longer exists, then are they going to expect us to refund them any money in any way because we have the equipment? Because who's going to be responsible for the repairs if everybody's using it? Still, you know, even without the cooperative being in existence?
Talking about this one right here.
Who's responsible for it?
Well, these are all the questions and the answers we need.
Right.
This came under a grant, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, cannot be done, you know, with a grant.
So, we don't know the answers, we can go around all night, we'll reach out to Cindy and we'll go from there. Article thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
How about twelve?
Fifteen, well, that was part of the box.
Well, did we vote, we didn't vote on these other articles?
I don't think we need to support them, I don't think we've ever supported them in the past.
Okay.
What, these?
One through twelve.
We just do it as a one in a block one by one.
Right.
I don't think we really need to support.
We don't have to.
I have a quick question for the defund articles thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Do you know if the school is planning on providing like a Cliff's Notes version of that?
We asked, I asked town council, she advised that we put all of this in here because nobody has privy to old bylaws or whatnot, so she asked, she recommends to put these in, and Deb Boyd will be at the meeting to answer any questions.
Okay, I understand that we need to have it all in one. My question is, is Deb planning on providing some sort of a single, short, like a, basically a Cliff's Notes version of what this is and...
So, it was just, to me, my Cliff's Notes was cleaning up since nineteen fifty-two.
Yeah, because I went to the, I went to the, the school committee hearing at the elementary and Deb said what it is, it's just to clean up and to change some wording and stuff, so nothing had been changed since nineteen fifty-two, so that's, that's all it is.
So, she'd have to explain it on the floor?
Yeah, Deb would have to explain it. She said none of the other towns were having any problem with it at all.
Oh, I don't doubt that most people will be willing to just accept it, but I think it, it helps to just have an elevator speech version of what it's about, what we want for.
Let's just clean up, change the wording, because you know, things have changed in all those years.
So, it's changing the wording to match what the actual practices are?
Well, it's just changing the language, she said. Just language and cleaning up some things. Maybe like for an example, they had like saying something, I'm just looking here, like it says procedure, maybe they, you know, want to clean up a lot of the wording in it and just make it more, you know, compile it into something shorter than what it's in.
I didn't compare contrast, the committee met several, several times for this, they worked very hard on it and I'll take their recommendation.
I will too.
Well, when you say, Linda, you're changing the language, I mean, that means you could be changing the whole concept.
Well, it's not going to change...
When you read it, it is pretty, it is pretty straightforward, it's just a lot of words.
I think she means condensed.
That's, that's why you have the ability to read it. And it's all changing, so the recommendation is to put it all in.
I see no problem, but I take Deb Boyd's word for it.
Well, it's not just hers.
Hers, it's the committee, I go along with, I trust the committee.
You guys going to take the motion?
Somebody want to make a motion to accept this?
I'll make a motion to support it.
Bob, second, sir?
The three of them, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Please smile.
Yeah.
Which Bob is going to second?
Father.
Bob, second, Bob, you second?
My silent second.
Okay, everybody in favor? Everybody has any more questions on it?
We'll have to make Bob a little yes or no.
All right, onward.
I'll entertain a motion to support article thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion? Having none all in favor?
Aye.
Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer of borrowed sum of money to purchase electronic boarding equipment or take any action relative thereto. Dave, how much was this again?
Five thousand with, what did we say, two hundred and...
Hundred and ninety.
Hundred and ninety, hundred and ninety quid.
Oh, you went up, that's good.
Yeah.
Since I talked to you.
Well, wait, we were going to do one twenty-five and then the board decided we should go up to...
So, five thousand, that's exactly what it is, is what you're asking for?
Yes, I can give you the exact figure if we need.
Yeah, we need it.
Which, well, I mean, I will have it for you.
Okay.
Okay, that's good. Now...
And where are you planning on taking this money?
Free cash.
Raise, what's he going to transfer?
Yes, from free cash.
Transfer from free cash.
Transfer from free cash, that's what we're changing.
Now, since I, if I could bring it up now, since I had talked to Dave, you said you wouldn't have this in place probably till next the annual town meeting?
Or the special?
Well, I know that...
Might come in for the special.
Well, I know that some communities that have hired different people, they will come out and do a free demo at a town meeting, so it's too bad you couldn't get somebody to come out and do the free demo even for the annual.
Okay.
I mean, I know it's kind of late, I don't know if it's too late.
All right, I'll check with them tomorrow for sure.
Might not, might not.
Yeah.
Because they are, a lot of communities are doing this, they've gone to this.
It streamlines the meetings.
Yes, it does.
Plus, plus people can vote the way they want to vote without somebody over their shoulder, you know?
Yeah.
All right, so we've already, Steve, we've already passed this.
So, you supported it?
Yeah.
Did you support it? You didn't support it?
Yes.
I'm on, I'll entertain a motion to support article sixteen.
I'll make that motion.
You okay, you guys are okay with this?
I am. I think it's good to know how I vote.
I just, I've never had a problem with letting anyone know how I voted and it just strikes me as odd as...
No, but some people do, so.
Yeah.
We're hoping for greater community participation.
Yes, I think if...
Greater attendance.
I've heard a lot about it.
I agree, I agree with both of you, one hundred percent.
A lot of people get intimidated when there's a controversial thing and it's too bad and, you know?
You got to stop intimidating people, Dave.
Yeah, I don't think that's the case.
All right, so, all in favor?
I think that might be the case.
You all in favor?
I guess it's unanimous. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer borrowers' sum of money to install a new ADA bathroom on the first floor of the town hall to address other ADA issues in the town hall, i.e. thresholds and ADA access. Uh, this will be a transfer for the exact amount that's in a current account. The purpose of this article is for complete transparency on what the board wants to do with this building. What's the figure in that account?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty even?
We got fifty thousand in there.
Now, are you gonna, are you gonna redo the other bathroom like we voted last time or are you gonna construct a new bathroom?
It would be a construction of a new bathroom. We debated on doing this at the, before the last special. We spoke with town council. The intent was to bring a bathroom up to ADA. We thought that a new bathroom would bring it up to ADA, so it stays within the intent of the vote. We've got a lot of feedback saying that we were usurping our ability and our authority, so we held off for this. And we wanna make it very transparent on what we wanna do.
Oh, I understand about transferring the money, but where are you planning on putting, are you planning on constructing a new bathroom?
Right here, Dave.
What are you gonna do with the existing bathroom?
Are you doing this for their benefit? Because we've had this discussion ten times.
I'm doing it for everybody that's watching this and, and our board, our board is wanting to know too, 'cause-
All right, so to the board, 'cause Dave and I have discussed this at least a dozen times. Have you guys seen the plan? Yeah, we did. Our last meeting, we brought the plan. Uh, the plan shows for a bathroom in the assessor's office. The last path was to do that in the assessor's office, but through discussion, we thought without displacing the assessors, build this bathroom here, which the plan shows. In the plan, it's a men's room. It'd be right here between, petition would be between those two windows and a little bit shorter than that door. Uh, it'd be technically a male's bathroom with, it was either two or three urinals and one toilet stall with two sinks, I believe.
I thought it was gonna be unisex, we talked.
It would, well, technically that'd be unisex, but in, in the plan, it's labeled as the men's bathroom.
Three urinals, how many stalls?
One stall.
One stall?
I believe so.
So, three men can go to the bathroom, but only one woman?
Two stalls. Two stalls.
Two stalls, two urinals, two sinks.
Okay. The other thing is, unisex bathrooms, from my past experience, are generally a single-person user.
It would still be a single-person user with a lock. We'd still, we'd have both bathrooms available, but this one would be ADA accessible. The other one is not ADA accessible.
I'm just wondering why you need then three urinals for a single access?
Because the desire is to bring this town hall up to that plan through incremental steps.
That plan being the, the whole?
The first and second, first and second floor.
Okay, which is what, four point six million dollars in the end?
No.
What's the total?
The first, there are four phases.
Yeah.
The first phase is fifty thousand dollars. The second phase is nine hundred, eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And then if we keep, and that gets us, the second phase gets us the elevator and access to the second floor. And then there are two more phases. They're both about a million dollars apiece, short of a million dollars apiece. And if we go to those extents, that stocking sprinklers and all these other things, then yes, you're gonna spend that over some period of time.
I didn't even argue that, against that, because the first phase for the fifty thousand was just handicap accessibility issues. It wasn't bathroom issues.
No, yep.
So we're getting, we're getting a bathroom for fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
With all the, and so even if none of the other work takes place, you'll still have ADA on the first floor with a unisex bathroom?
So-
Well, so two technically.
So you have that one. Well, that's not ADA though.
Correct. We wouldn't vacate that bathroom.
Thank you, thank you.
Are you gonna, so are you gonna keep that bathroom functional?
Correct.
And what's that gonna be called?
A bathroom.
Okay, what about a gender bathroom? Is that gonna be part of the unisex?
I don't think we have to label bathrooms.
If it's unisex, then that will cover the gender.
Covers everything.
That will cover gender too, okay.
We had a, I remember, we talked to the, um,
Robert Wall.
Mr. Wall about it and he said there was discussion that they wanted to call them gender neutral.
But, but that's, that's if they're shared bathrooms. These, these, it's-
Unisex.
But I'm just telling you what Mr. Wall had told us.
Well, that's, that's a discussion down in Beacon Hill and through North Carolina and all that. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking, we're talking about access-
Having some working, working acceptable restrooms in the building.
We're talking, what, not even working, accessible, accessible, that's the word, is accessible. They're both working. If you have to lock a door to use one bathroom, you have to lock a door to use one bathroom. This isn't about who goes in it. This is about being able to access it with a wheelchair or any other handicap. And it, and it moves us in a, in a path that the board has approved, that we've gotten through a grant for a plan for both floors. The biggest key in this whole plan is that elevator.
And then the second piece of this is if we say we're gonna go forward, we have two grant cycles. One in February seventeen, and one in March of seventeen, where we can go ask for a whole bunch of money to be able to do that without, without town expense.
Well, they're probably matching grants, so-
I'm sorry.
But this, this board realizes it's anywhere from a five to a ten-year plan. It's not like we're going through this in, in a really expedited manner. This, this is the, and we discussed this at the municipal facilities planning committee. We were gonna get one or the other. We talked about town hall, we talked about police station. We have a police station. Now it's time to do something to this building. The waste upstairs, everyone in this room's been upstairs, it's an absolute waste. It's a tragedy. It, it needs to be brought back.
But that, all that is not part of this Article seventeen?
No, but that's, but this is, it's for the transparency of what we wanna do and to me, it's for the buy-in of what that plan represents.
All right, so this fifty thousand, are you gonna do anything to the other bathroom with the fifty thousand?
Not at all.
Okay, so the fifty thousand is gonna be used to construct this one?
Not, no, not just that, um,
Well, the ten thousand for the-
Thresholds and then the door for the hand, for the ramp. It has to be.
Okay, you're just swapping money from over to here.
Correct. This, this, the trade would've been pulled on this months ago, but there was a lot of feedback that we were deceiving the town.
So, okay, so then we're just gonna have this selectmen's office on the back wall with a new bathroom, right?
Selectmen's meeting?
Selectmen's meeting.
Yeah, just-
Meeting room will just be a little smaller, which, given the huge crowd that we have today, I think we'll be okay.
Well, they do vote in here too, so.
No, it's in its own line.
All right, someone wanna make-
They still have an assessor's office.
Huh? Where's the assessor?
We're not, we're not dealing with the assessor's office.
That's gonna stay there.
That's a beauty, this plan, bathroom here, the assessor stays there.
The assessor is staying like that.
If we move forward, the plan shows for different offices in this room, but that's with the ability to use upstairs as well. So that, that'll be the next step.
Could I just ask, since you seem to know about the grants, talking matching, so, and I know this is a little bit beyond this fifty thousand, but since we're on the subject, what kind of money are we talking about having to match? Is it like fifty percent or?
I'll give you the elevator specifically. Within the architect's plan, the hardware for the elevators, a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. What Mass Historical will do is they will match up to thirty percent of a major project. So that's why the nine hundred thousand might be important to be able to use the nine hundred thousand as far as the bigger project. And so, the hundred and thirty-one, they'd match at fifty percent, so that gets you to-
Fifty percent or thirty percent?
Fifty percent, but it needs to be thirty percent of a larger project. So it needs to be, okay, to kinda get the math, so a hundred and thirty-one is the hardware, is the double it, quarter of a million dollars to get it installed. They'll fund up to thirty percent of a larger project. If you take the architect's proposal for Phase Two, which includes the elevator, it's nine hundred thousand dollars. So then effectively, we'd say that Mass Historical would buy you the elevator. So now, then you would wanna think about the six hundred thousand that might be needed for the, for the balance of that phase. The next CBDG grant run phase that we can go to apply for is February of seventeen. And so you'd apply under CBDG for the six hundred thousand dollars. And if you've got six hundred thousand dollars, it would be zero fund for, for the town. But there may be some matching requirements for matching within the six hundred that you have to worry about.
We don't know yet.
And we don't know yet until you apply for the grant.
So hypothetically, how much will the townspeople still have to come up with if you got your grants, what you just said?
The fifty percent match would be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Well, I'm talking about the whole, the whole thing.
Whole project?
I don't, the CBDG, I don't know. I don't know. I, I know the Mass Historical piece.
So you're basing it on around a million and?
Nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand, nine hundred eighty, what'd you say?
And, and what I did is I carved it up, David, in two blocks. One that I know something about, which is the March seventeen grant proposal for Mass Historical. That's a fifty percent match of a thirty percent project. Interestingly, that we have-
So we need to know, okay, townspeople will need to know how much they're gonna come up with out of the tax dollars.
But not tonight.
No, 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 I'm just-
After February of seventeen, which is basically a year from now, we would know whether we're in or out as far as the grants.
Okay.
And if you're not in with the grants, you delay it until the next round.
And to be honest with you, one bathroom in here with an elevator allows us to do whatever we want upstairs. You wanna talk about community buy-in? Upstairs is absolutely, we've had Elsie up there.
Are you gonna be asking the people to go for an override or deexclusion for this?
Well, yeah.
No?
Well, we haven't, we haven't even got that.
Not necessarily, not, not necessarily. Not, not, we're given the current-
You can't afford a hundred and thirty thousand, I mean, my, my initial reaction is you can't afford the, the matching grant for the elevator? Is that what you're suggesting, without going for override?
I'm talking, we're basing her on nine hundred something thousand.
No, we have, well, just, just as, just to clarify, okay, is that, um, and I, I want someone to check my numbers and that's where normally the town accountant would play a role, okay? But there would be currently based on how we have funded our operational budget for the town and where our levy limit currently is, okay? Uh, and depending on how much of it gets covered, it, it's, it's very conceivable that we could fit that under the levy limit, depending on how it was financed, the, the town's portion of those funds. Whether it was something that, um, depending on, on what's left. And we don't really know the what's left until we really apply for the grants.
That's right.
But, uh, we're, we're in a position where even if we wound up potentially financing it, we could fit it in under the levy limit within our current operational budget without going for an override.
What's the levy?
Without going for an override.
Without going for an override.
Taxes would-
But the taxes would still go up.
Taxes. Taxes will still go up. I'm just, you're gonna let the townspeople know where we're going here?
Absolutely, but let's be clear that it would not, it would not go, it would not necessarily, we would not necessarily, depending on the final numbers and the method of funding that portion of the numbers, it might not necessarily force an override, okay?
Either way, with, what I'm saying is either way, with an override or not, your taxes still go up. That's just the bottom line.
If we don't, if, if we don't put an elevator in, your taxes are still gonna go up.
Oh, absolutely, which makes it doubly, doubly interesting, doesn't it?
Then the taxes would go up even more than what you're saying.
Right.
I just wanna make sure it's clear to them.
I, I wouldn't support an override, to, to be clear with you.
Uh, we'll see how the grant process goes.
And I'm just, and I'm just stating that it might not necess, might not be necessary to support the plan, depending on how well executed the plan is.
People that have the taxes, no.
Yeah, we'll work on, let's work on the grants or see where that goes.
So did you guys make a motion to support it?
Make a motion to support the transfer of the previously allocated funds for Article seventeen.
Who wants to second it?
I will.
Any more discussion?
That's currently a fifty thousand, huh?
Right.
Correct, and it's currently a transfer from the previously-
Which we allocated last week, uh, last year.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to support Article seventeen?
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? You're not all in favor? Eighteen, to see whether the town of Brookfield shall participate in the Attorney General's abandonment housing initiative or take any action relative thereto. Was that how the article was written?
Accept that how it was written.
That was just a question. Citizen's petition, so it's just a support or non-support?
Someone, we've already discussed it, right? We all know, so someone wants to make a motion to accept and not accept. I think we are voting not to accept this.
You have to, you have to put it, you have to put it on, Dave.
Well, we're gonna put it on, but I'm just saying.
All these are on.
They're all on, it has to be.
So we support to put it on, definitely.
It's gotta be.
But the actual, we don't support-
But we, right.
So the advisory committee does not?
Well, I wanna make sure that's clear. I mean, if, if we say we, if you put this in there and we say, yes, we support this, we're not supporting this. We're supporting to put it on, but we're not supporting it-
But no, you don't even support to put it on. If you have a citizen's petition, you have to put it on.
So, so stop, stop. This, this, from special town meeting, the wording isn't what you're saying to put it on. It's to support the article from the advisory committee.
Or not.
All you're saying is put it on.
Yeah, but-
No.
It's on, you have to put it on.
What we're voting right now is what we're recommending, so.
That's exactly it.
It's on whether we like it or not.
Correct.
Five of us do not support.
Support.
So the advisory committee does not support this. So to see if the town of Brookfield shall participate in the Attorney-
That's correct.
So I'll entertain a motion from the Board of Selectmen to support Article eighteen.
I'll offer that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Board of Selectmen unanimously support.
We already, we already voted this, so we don't have to re-vote.
I made the note. Article nineteen, to see whether the town of Brookfield shall provide a five hundred dollar yearly stipend to each member of the advisory committee. Provided no recommendation due to conflict of interest, so I will entertain a motion. I, I physically don't support it, but the way the motions are going, is I'll entertain a motion to support Article nineteen.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Um, I'm, again, gonna vote no for this. I just, just wore 'em out. Any other discussion?
How does the advisory board feel about it?
Well, if it happens, it happens and if it don't, it don't. We're still gonna be here.
We're not recommending, we can't recommend this conflict of interest for all intents and purposes.
Well, I understand.
If it gets more, if, if, if it's voted in and we get more people on the board, then that's fine. If it doesn't get voted in-
Is five hundred dollars a year gonna keep you on the board?
Well, I've heard a few people said they'd jump on it if they got the five hundred.
It's, it's not us. It's people that we're trying to recruit to get on the board.
To be honest with you, I-
And they'll say not till we get paid.
I, I don't think I want someone on the board like that.
I'm just, we're just telling you what was told to us.
That's the way it is.
I just changed my vote. Thank you, Steve.
Do you want somebody on the board that has a mentality like that? I'm not gonna join unless I get five hundred dollars. That's, that's the mentality.
That would be, if that's a mentality, no, 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 no. But, but at the same time, these guys put hours and hours.
None of the people that I've asked on to the advisory committee have, have made that statement to me. There's, there's been a lot of other statements about why they won't join the advisory committee, but it's never been because it's an unpaid position.
And this has, this has come up several times before the town and it's always gotten shot down. But again, it's a citizen's petition, so there's a motion on the floor. All in favor? All, you, you wanna support this?
Oh, no, I don't wanna support it either.
Yes, I, I, you changed my vote.
Not, not in favor?
Not in favor.
Not in favor.
All right, so the Board of Selectmen unanimously does not support Article nineteen. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer borrowers' sum of one dollar to private roads or take any action relative thereto.
I'll make that motion.
I'll let them go first.
Someone wanna make a motion?
To make a motion to support it.
It's a standard, standard thing every year, okay?
Why aren't we putting this in the block?
All in favor? Yeah, why wasn't this in the, the first fifteen?
Just put it, yeah, that one should just go in the block.
So then we don't even have to take a vote to support, do we?
We just did, so we're all set.
Can you, can you make sure that with Cindy that we can put this in the block?
This, years ago, this used to be a line item in the budget.
But remember that one year it didn't get put in? That one year we missed and it caused a lot to happen. We couldn't follow the roads, remember?
So is this why they're putting it on now as an article? 'Cause it always was a line item.
It should just be a block.
It should be in the block in the first standard. So we go to town meeting, we can just vote on what we're being in?
Only 'cause it came in as a, as a separate article.
Well, just ask Cindy if we can put it in the block. If it, if it can't, you guys already took a vote, so I'll entertain a motion to support Article twenty if it can't be put in the block.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? Item, Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from the ambulance receipt reserved account to fund the fiscal twenty seventeen emergency squad expense account, take any action relative thereto.
We already voted, so.
So I'll entertain a motion to support Article-
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? You're not all in favor?
Aye.
Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from the ambulance receipt reserved account to fund the twenty seventeen emergency squad wage account, take any action relative thereto. Have you guys already voted on that?
Yeah, we already voted that as well.
Supporting it?
Yes, we did, yeah.
Entertain a motion to support Article twenty-two?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? You're not all in favor? Twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer borrowers' sum-
Twenty.
I missed over, thank you. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer borrowers', I was on the right path though. Sum of money to the road reconstruction account, take any action relative thereto, now it's thirty-five thousand. Did you guys vote on this already?
Yeah.
Supporting it? Entertain, entertain a motion to support Article twenty-three?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? You're not all in favor?
Aye.
Article twenty-four, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer borrowers' sum of seven thousand five hundred to the center line painting account, take any action relative thereto. Entertain a motion to support Article twenty-four?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You guys already supported it, right?
Yeah.
Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from the driveway permit account to the driveway repair account, take any action relative thereto, a hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Wait, did the advisory committee vote on this yet?
Which one?
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, it's not on there, but we did vote that one.
So you support it? Entertain a motion for the Board to support?
I'll make the motion.
If you vote on that one, I don't remember this one.
I don't remember that either.
I don't remember what's doing this. All right, so let's, let's, we'll vote now.
I'll make a motion to support, or to recommend Article twenty-five.
Someone wanna second that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer borrowers' sum of money to purchase materials for making repairs to the dump sander body on the ninety-one Mack truck and the platform body on the ninety-seven Ford, take any action relative thereto, sum of forty-seven hundred dollars.
I'll make the motion.
This advisory committee hasn't-
Oh, the advisory board.
I don't think we discussed this, did we? This is about the catchphrase in truck.
This is the, no, this is the one that actually I was asking, the question is the, why the highway hadn't requested funds from the existing fleet repair replacement account funds this year. So is there, is there a reason why we're waiting for annual town meeting? Because I thought one of the primary reasons for the fleet repair replacement account was to go ahead and fix things as it breaks.
Herb's requesting it on the floor.
Because there's nineteen thousand dollars in there at last, that we knew.
Yeah.
That's what's left from when they did the, when Herb already did the repairs to the, the truck he had, he got the.
Last figures we saw said there was nineteen thousand dollars still up there.
And then Peter fixed the forest fire one, right?
Yes.
So there's nineteen thousand.
Last we, last we knew, yeah, so.
If, if, if the last variance report is accurate, which is a whole other question.
And he's got three in here that fall under that, which go over that amount, so there might be some method there. So.
But they're all articles. So if you could take something out of it, you know what I mean?
I had the conversation with Cindy, he's requesting that these are articles.
That's fine, just we can vote whether or not to recommend them, that's all.
That's what we're here for.
Is this nineteen ninety-seven forty? Is that the one ton flatbed truck?
Probably.
Huh?
Yeah.
It's my guess.
Ninety-seven forty, the one ton that they were, wasn't supposed to.
They was, that was supposed to be junked, and then they kept it, and after they bought the other one. Now they have three of them. What do they wanna do to it?
Something on the body.
Says platform body. Could be the bed, could be the cab.
Okay, what do you guys wanna do? I'm kind of up in the air, I mean, I don't know all the facts that I should have, but.
Oh, maybe it's new plank or something on the body. It's a platform body.
Yeah. Where's the money coming from, Steve?
They're saying transfer borrow.
It would come from free cash.
Okay.
So, because I, I ran, I ran all these articles through a spreadsheet, and basically, we can support everything except the water truck, the bathroom, and know both of those have funding, alternate funding sources. Basically, everything that's listed as a transfer would be the water truck, the town hall bathroom, and the driveway. Everything else, we've got heads, we've got headspace and free cash to pay for that's on the warrant, I believe. I'm gonna check it as we go.
Could I ask a quick question? When I was out, I had to take that call, did we put the money back into the stabilization that we took out?
The sixty thousand, yes.
Was that on the special?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Was it a special?
Yeah, so you've, so.
Don't worry about that one, then, we're right on that.
So this is, so all of that's been subtracted best, so we know that we have enough to put.
Yes.
That's what she's.
That's what I, that's what I'm saying, is I have a, I have a, I, I keep a running tablet, the warrant articles as well, that shows like where the money's coming from and what we have in free cash. And right now, we would have enough money to support that from free cash, so we wouldn't have to go anywhere else for it.
The only thing that I'm thinking, I had, a little bit ahead on is, there's, there was, there's supposed to be, I think, an article to put a certain amount of money into this fleet.
There, there should be an article.
Right.
There is an article.
That there's an article.
And that's for eighty thousand?
To bring it to a hundred thousand.
So that would bring it to a hundred, and it was to buy two vehicles, I believe.
I thought we wanted to put a hundred thousand in it.
Well, to bring it to a hundred.
Well, we have nineteen in it now, and that's why we reduce it to eighty.
Oh, you did reduce it.
Well, we're gonna discuss.
Oh, we're gonna discuss it. Oh, okay, all right.
So which, the other reason, the other thing is, is just for, you know, you could argue this point either way, for the sake of shorter, a short, a shorter warrant, and hopefully a shorter meeting, we could just, we could lump all of these together into the fleet repair replacement.
No, I don't think so.
He doesn't want it, so I don't know what his method of madness is.
I think the people need to know what we're voting and what we're spending.
Well, my thing is, we, we recommended eighty thousand with this to make it a hundred, and what was the cost of the two vehicles that we were supposed to be using that to buy? It wasn't gonna equal a hundred, which would still leave a balance.
Right.
But we have multiple vehicles, and we have a whole fiscal year to deal with issues. That, that amount needs to progressively get higher, because we have a lot of vehicles and capital improvements through those vehicles that we're not taking care of.
We understand that, Steve.
No, I understand about actual vehicle replacement, I understand that, but the thing is, of using that account for, it's supposed to also be for repairs, and so we keep voting money into it, and then they keep doing articles for repairs, and it defeats the purpose of the account.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know that it does defeat the purpose of the account, because one of the things it does provide for you is that every time you're making a decision between repair and replace, okay, you're, you're having that conversation of the cost of ownership, okay? So an older vehicle, it's paid for, you've had it, it's been running, but there's, you know, I think you use the analogy at one point of your, what was it, like your eighty-seven pickup or something that you just recently fixed?
Oh, well, we fixed the fire truck, gives a perfect example. We fixed a truck last year.
Is, is the repair versus replace. Makes perfect sense to flow it through the same account from a standpoint of people understanding the cost of ownership of these capital items. So I, I don't see a problem with it, with funding for both things, repairing and replacing, coming from a single fund. There's, there's really no issue there.
All right, so you guys, you guys on board with the forty-seven hundred?
I'll, I'll make a motion to support it.
Who wants to second it? All right, any, any further discussion on that? I wish we had more tracks, but, okay, let's vote.
Well, I just don't want, I just don't wanna see that entire hundred thousand dollars be used on two vehicles, which we were planning on only using eighty of it for.
It's, it's not, it's not, it's not gonna happen. In, in my mind, and obviously it's through the board, I, I'd like a new vehicle for the police chief, and I think we can get a, a suitable used vehicle for the fire.
Good used one for the fire, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's not gonna cost a hundred thousand for both of them.
You still have time, Dave, to have Herb come in to discuss it.
Oh, yeah, I will.
So then is it the board's intention then to, whatever that balance is after the purchase of those two vehicles, is it that intention to be like a starting point for building up that account? Is that what your intention is? Because I just don't wanna leave that extra twenty in there and have something else come along that's gonna suck it out of there, you know?
It's, it needs to start being built.
So that's your way of building it, is by.
A lot of vehicles in this town.
Using articles to support the other things.
Well, I, I would have used it out of, out of that account. Article twenty-eight, to me, is the one that we started having the discussion with, because he requested that six thousand, I think, to both boards.
Yeah.
Months ago, then he changed his mind.
All right, so is our board all in favor of the forty-seven hundred to do these two items? Okay, Bob seconds it. You in favor of that, Reed?
Are you okay with that, Laura?
Mm-hmm.
Bobby? Yeah?
Yeah, all right, that's a, that's a vote.
Entertain a motion to support Article twenty-six.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Only discussion I have for keeping two other vehicles in the fleet for forty-seven hundred dollars, I think it's good money.
I do too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article twenty-seven, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer borrow some money to rehab a nineteen eighty Mack truck to a catch basin or purchase a used truck to be retrofitted as a catch basin truck or take any action relative thereto, requesting ten thousand.
Just a little bit of discussion. Mr. Barnes, at one time, when we addressed this previously, made, didn't believe, if I'm correct, that that truck could be retrofitted because it's too short.
I believe it's framed too short.
Has anyone checked out the engineering on the wheelbase?
He understands it, I know that.
I, I would trust Donnie, and I would trust Herb.
Yeah, I would too.
They understand that completely. That's why they were able to secure the, the boom thing.
Because every catch basin truck I've seen has been pretty long than a dump, a dump truck.
But it depends on what they got for the body, for, and the basin itself, with the.
And I know the details came with it. I don't have the sheet of paper in front of me, though. Is the ten thousand dollars, did they already have the catch basin, or does that include the catch basin?
No, we, we already approved the purchase of the catch basin.
That's coming from chapter ninety, right?
The only thing they don't have is the clamp shell itself.
Well, I thought that's coming out of chapter ninety, the clamp shell.
It, it is, but what I'm saying is, we were able to secure by chapter ninety, the lift piece.
Yeah.
And what was missing from the lift piece was the clamp shell, which they'd have to get as well.
Out of chapter ninety.
But the, I would suggest that, back to the chair's point, Donnie's looked at this thing and believes that he's got a good plan.
Okay, because now.
I feel, my, my personal feeling, if Donnie and Herb know, have approved of this, or they know what they're talking about, they've been down there many years, actively.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not questioning, just wanna make sure that.
You are, you are questioning it.
I am questioning, I wanna make sure the engineering is, is done, because I know other things in town that have been engineered in this town. We spent big bucks on it, and it wasn't engineered properly, so I wanna make sure.
I trust their judgment, the woman.
Plus Thanksgiving, he's got a.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just going on, just wanna make sure we don't make the same mistake again. And I'm not gonna say what the truck is.
I respect that.
No.
But he does give himself.
Originally, they wanted to junk this nineteen eighty Mack, because they said they couldn't get Pats for it, this, that, and the other, and now we wanna put money into it.
Or purchase a used vehicle to retrofit it.
We're gonna get for ten thousand.
Sell off the parts.
Okay.
But, I mean, that's what he's talking about, giving the flexibility.
I mean, if we, if we can, if, I mean, if that nineteen eighty Mack is usable, because we're not gonna use it a lot, because it's cleaning catch bases out.
Well, it's gonna be used a lot in the beginning, because none of these, none of these catch basins have been cleaned.
In two years.
I'm just going on what the conversations were in the prior.
It's, it's gonna sound like a Monty Python, not Monty Python skito. Not dead yet, yes, but you soon will be. That's gonna be the conversation we're having with that truck, so.
Well, then the thing is, then, the intention really isn't in the.
No, I'm just, I'm, my, my observation is that it is an older truck, there is a risk in doing the conversion.
And the beauty is, we take the stuff off and put it on a new truck.
But the beauty is, you do have the, the backend is the expensive bit at this point, so.
Okay, and then he'll junk the nineteen eighty when we get the other vehicle.
No, we're gonna use the nineteen eighty for this.
Eighty until it dies.
Oh, I mean, it would die.
Basically, use it.
We'll just, we'll just use it until it dies, unless it, unless an opportunity comes up to get a used truck that's appropriate, that fits the budget that's being requested, which you could conceivably find one, quite frankly, because usually what restrains us when we're buying used equipment for, say, plowing, is that after a certain number of miles, you don't, and, and you know that that other town has been using it for plowing, it's, it's kinda like dog years.
Oh, no, I know.
You ain't gonna get much for ten grand.
Well, the thing is, the thing is, though, is, if this is only, if the, if the chapter ninety money is taking care of the lift and the clamp shell, okay, so that's not included in this ten thousand, it's gonna cost, it, saying that he's gonna use that nineteen eighty, it's gonna cost ten thousand dollars to work on that truck just to put those things on?
That's a question you guys.
I mean, as a layperson, I just kinda like.
What, what you've also heard is the truck needed to be extended.
Yeah, that's for the frame extension.
And in here, it says purchased as well, so.
Now, see, now we, you, no one said about extending the frame. Now you're talking about extending the frame.
Because that, that would mean that it's not adequate.
That was a question I just had about engineering, so, so is that gonna take place?
It says to, that the motion is to rehab a nineteen eighty truck.
Or.
I'm not, I'm not an engineer, I'm not designing what has to be done.
All right, just, just making sure.
They, they know the center of gravity, they know the wheelbase.
Yeah.
They're gonna be driving it, they don't wanna be tipping down the road.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, someone wanna make a motion to accept or not accept?
It's not to accept or not accept.
Support.
Support, I'm just, well, that's what I'm asking, so who?
I think if, if they lengthen that frame or anything else, that truck has to be resurfaced.
Okay, but that's maybe what they're gonna use the ten thousand for. Okay, so someone wanna make?
I'll make a motion to support it.
Someone wanna second it? Bob sec, any, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
That's a vote.
Entertain a motion to support Article twenty-seven.
I'll make the motion.
And we'll get, Bob, we'll get more information on, if they're gonna extend it.
Yeah, yeah, I would say.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer or borrow some of money to repair the center pins and bushings of the ninety-five truck with loader, take any action relative thereto, amount of six thousand dollars. Mr. Chair?
I thought we did most of this type of work down at the highway.
And there's a catch to do it.
Huh?
It's planted, it says they'll split it in half.
Who, who did it the last time we put the center pin in?
They sent it out.
We sent it out, okay. All right, that answered my question. Is this money gonna come out of the repair replacement account, or are we gonna take it out of free cash?
Recommend free cash.
Free cash.
We would be technically for all three of those, for all three of those, would the intent be to drop the money in fleet repair replacement, or would they just be allocated to that one task? And the only reason why I'm asking that is the accounting is gonna get really complicated if we're voting all of these as individual articles. It would make more sense to, to, to raise appropriate transfer or borrow some of money to the fleet repair replacement account for the purpose of, just for the sake of when whoever's doing our books is doing the books, it can all get allocated to a single account, and all the checks written off a single account.
The only, and this is, this is only knee jerk, the only, and, and that's the easiest, the only knee jerk I have would be a limitation of only forty-seven hundred.
Right.
Of only ten thousand.
Yes.
That's what I was thinking, too.
Because if it's a separate article and its own line item, and then if there's more money after, we could.
Because if there were money left in that account, they may also feel free to go beyond what the initial amount was.
I'd, I'd rather have it as just an article.
All right, so we're only leaving the ways.
I'd, I'd rather have.
That's just a knee jerk.
Okay.
Someone wanna make a motion to accept the six thousand? To have it done?
I'll make it.
Second?
I will.
Any discussions? Bob? Any discussions?
No, there's nothing we can do. If he says it's broke, it's gonna be left.
Okay. That's the articulating pin, takes a lot of wear. All in favor?
It's a heavy piece of.
That's what it makes grease for.
Okay, we support.
Entertain a motion to support Article twenty-eight?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
The lead will have free cash.
Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer borrow some of money to the fleet repair replacement account to fund planned vehicle replacement and unplanned vehicle repairs. It's not for the amount. So it's technically, if you said it's nineteen, it'd be the amount of eighty-one?
Well, we did take a vote, now that I just remembered, I think we took a vote for thirty-five, is that correct?
Plus the nineteen that's left.
Plus the nineteen that was in there.
Only thirty-five thousand?
Well, the board is placing this on as, I'm gonna say eighty-one thousand.
Yep.
So you can, you can vote to support or not support eighty-one thousand.
You wanna go back on what we said? You wanna support it for the eighty, or you wanna leave it the way we had it?
It'll be a transfer from free cash.
And from a warrant book perspective, if, if, if you want to abide by the vote that was taken, we could put it in the book as Board of Selectmen's support at eighty-one thousand, and we support at the, at the amount that y'all voted. So.
Okay, we already voted, so we, we support it, and we're just, we're worried about the Okay, we already voted, so we su- we support it, and we're just, we're worried about the money after, when the time comes.
So my question to you as the Chair is, do you want it to read in the warrant book that, that the advisory committee supports or recommends at thirty-five, at a level of thirty-five thousand? And then, and then we can put that the Board of Selectmen support at a level of eighty-one thousand.
Eighty-one. That's up to, what do you?
It's not a level, it's a transfer because.
A transfer.
No, no, at a level, at a level of, it's, it's a term, it's like using the term loss. So you support this article at a funding level of eighty-one thousand.
So you wanna do the thirty-five, you wanna just, you wanna just keep it where we have it, or you wanna, what do you wanna do?
Well, that would make a total amount of sixty-four thousand dollars.
Thirty-five plus nineteen?
Yeah. Nope.
Fifty-four.
No, fifty-four. Thank you.
Let's keep it where we had it.
Which is fifty-four.
Do we know that, but do we know that's the definite figure that we have left in that fleet account?
Well, at that time that we.
A week ago was nineteen thousand and some change, three hundred something, I believe. So we're trying to get an updated, uh.
You're recommending that once we purchase a new vehicle for the chief of police, and a used vehicle for the fire chief, basically that fund's gonna be depleted altogether. Through two, through two purchases, and then we have no planning whatsoever for any other vehicle in Towne Brookfield for the fiscal year.
That's the purpose of the eighty-one.
Yeah.
Well, what we've been doing, it seems, over the last, you know, couple of years is, um, as, I know what you're saying about planning, but what we end up doing is each year addressing each department's needs and generally just funding that vehicle for that year.
It's been a knee jerk at a special meeting.
Well, when we talk about it at our meetings.
Right.
No, it's at a special town meeting, every replacement, basically we're doing every replacement at a special town meeting as a knee jerk in necessity. That's, that's really not how you plan.
I guess that's been our method of dealing with the problem.
And the desires.
Is to look at each department individually, I don't consider it a knee jerk, because we know that the needs are out there, and we're just choosing to address them, a vehicle or two at a time.
Well, the knee jerk was that we were gonna be down, and if we were down, actually another one broke, a plow truck, and we had to get it. But to me, that's a knee jerk.
I got it.
Alright, so we're, we're supporting for now, and before the book's printed, we'll, we'll take another vote on the dollar amount, so we can keep moving this on.
So entertain a motion to bring.
How's that sound?
Entertain a motion to support the, uh, the final amount, whatever it is, we're seeing eighty-one now, but to bring that amount up to the hundred thousand.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
So you're saying you support it, Dave, but you don't want a specific amount?
Right, right, no, we, we will get that, the next meeting before the books get printed in.
We just need to find the number.
Right.
Eighty-one.
So you're at eighty-one, right?
Yeah.
If it's at nineteen now.
Yep.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Article thirty, to see if the town will vote, put a question mark for you guys, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer or borrow some of money to the library building repair maintenance account and take any action relative there too.
Yeah, we supported that already, yeah.
Did you guys talk about where you're getting it? Are you raising appropriate or transfer or borrow?
Out of free cash.
So you're transferring from free cash?
Yep.
Okay, just so you know, we're, we're recommending on every article, other than water truck, town hall bathroom, and driveway, that it comes from free cash.
You've looked at all other accounts?
So I have not looked at all other accounts.
Cause we could close some of those out.
Based it on three twenty-two.
Well, if there's, if there's, so, and, and the reason why I hadn't looked at any other accounts is because information regarding those other accounts was sometimes less than forthcoming from the financial team. If we are aware of certain accounts that have been previously voted, that we would like to zero out, or that come evident as, you know, whoever comes in and starts doing our accounting function, that's great. But currently, we can fund everything safely from free cash without having to go through the validation of the accounts prior to town meeting, and we really only have, what, three weeks now at this point? So we can safely just do it from free cash, and we can always clean up the other accounts at the special. If we wanna do an account cleanup at the special and transfer stuff into stabilization or what have you, it simplifies that whole process.
What special?
We're basing it on three twenty-two, right, Steve? The free cash?
You guys have followed the numbers?
It was three twenty-two, five thirty-two was the official number on the paperwork from the state, yeah, that's what the state certified.
Okay, so that's what we're, that's what we're basing, we're, we're figuring the money's coming from.
Article thirty-two, I'd say a motion to support.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer and borrow some of money to purchase air tanks, protect a building for the fire department, take any action relative there too, twenty thousand dollars. Again, transfer from free cash?
Yes.
We supported that too.
Um, however.
We didn't get it printed out.
We, I've asked that we see, Mr. Martel told us that there is now a computer program that allows him to formulate, um, uh, a replacement of equipment, you know, spread out over time, so that we can look and see what we have already replaced in the last few years and what's coming up that's gonna need replacement. And I had asked if he could give us, you know, once that should be implemented, and give us a printout of that, and we haven't gotten it yet. All we keep getting is requests for replacement of equipment, but we don't get any.
Can you call him tomorrow and have that sent to the Chair?
He gave us.
This is what we got.
We got something tonight, but it was the same as we got three weeks ago.
Yeah, all we got was what they requested.
Just let, just let them know that they, let him know that that's insufficient.
Didn't we talk to him about this when we were going over?
We did, it's, it's.
And he said.
It's a lot of money, he, I, I'm assuming he's doing it in the capital.
And didn't he say that this would be the last time for a while he would be requesting this?
That's fine, but I wanna see it.
Oh, I understand that, I know what you're saying.
It's like the school puts forth their capital for a number of years.
Because every, I mean, cause every single year this is on.
Right, and that's why we came to that conclusion, we wanna see what, what, how many bottles are out, how many need to be changed.
We asked him when he was in the room.
Yeah, we fully support, you know, taking care of the firefighters. Absolutely, but we just want.
But we wanna know, you know, we see twenty thousand every time, we wanna know where it's going and how many, what's being done.
We'll request it and it'll come through. So did you guys vote on this already?
Yeah, we supported it.
So entertain a motion for the board to support Article thirty-one?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Are we not all in favor?
Aye.
Article thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer or borrow some of money, purchase hydraulic rescue equipment for the fire department, take any action relative there too, why is there a question mark with four thousand, Karen?
That's what, that's what was on the submission, was four thousand.
He requested four thousand, right?
That a joyous of life?
Can you just confirm?
Yeah, it's a jaws of life, it failed.
Four thousand, make sure it's good, and you guys voted to support?
We did.
Entertained a motion to support Article thirty-two?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer or borrow some of money to replace the two base radios at the police station and one cruiser radio, to a radio upgrade that will need to be complete within the next three years and take any action relative there too, fourteen thousand four hundred dollars.
Yep, that's what he said.
That's just a beginning.
That's free cash too.
That's what we're asking to upgrade the digital. That's just a beginning.
That's the digital.
Updating the digital transmission.
Okay.
That's what's driving it.
Did you guys vote on this?
Yes.
You supported it?
Yes.
Entertained a motion to support Article thirty-three?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer or borrow some of money from the water, so this can be a transfer, water department surplus account, and it's gonna be with, it's internal. Water department system improvement account for the purchase of a new truck, and the water department take any action relative there too. Dave, you met with him, you saw the truck, did your board take a vote on this?
Uh, I don't think we took a vote yet on the water truck, did we?
So the floor is yours.
There's the one you said he did the repair on the body and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And it was only that small portion. Yeah, I looked at the truck, um, it has some, it has some little tiny body issues, he's done some repairs, nice repairs. The only thing he said it may need is a steering column, and he said he had a cracked leaf spring, I believe. And it's got about a hundred thousand on it, I mean, if it was my truck, I would probably try to keep it in the fleet for two more years.
That leaf spring might do a thousand dollar repair right there if you get it done professionally.
If it needs to be, you know, if, I don't know, but.
Well, they've been doing a lot of work on it.
I was thinking, wait, I was, a couple of members were thinking, once we get a new highway, a new water superintendent, let him decide what he would like to do with the truck.
What kind of vehicle?
Yeah. But I mean, right now, I would, I mean, myself, I would say not this year, I'd say maybe in two years or a year, I don't know.
But the thing is, I mean, this is coming, I mean, it's from their money, it's not anything that we really have to raise in appropriate.
Well, it's still, it's still, I understand that, Linda, it's still not coming out of the taxpayers, but it's still coming out of the town's water, out of the water money from the townspeople. I mean, we just got done discussing if we can repair something rather than, you know, it's only got a hundred thousand on it, so. That's my spiel, you guys.
And it doesn't go very far?
No.
Regularly?
No, doesn't see highway miles at all, which is not good, but. So I think we, I mean, I think we can get another two years out of it myself, but, well, let the new water superintendent do it when he wants to, you know?
I think actually the primary, the, the one issue I heard raised that, that, that has, um, I shouldn't say it's the one issue I heard raised on this that has merit, but one of the issues that I heard raised on this that has some merit is depending on the department, some folks go with a truck with a toolbox body like what we have currently. Other communities are going with like vans that are set up with, with, with full tooling inside.
We used to have, that's what we had before, we had the van and had the tooling.
Oh, Pete, Pete has that, yeah.
So I think the point to waiting for the new superintendent is different people have different preferences, some people like being able, like the toolboxes where you can access it all from the outside, standing on the ground. Cause they don't wanna, me personal, I don't wanna be climbing in and out of the vehicle in order to get at my tools, but somebody might prefer, you know, getting out in the weather for a second.
So you're, you're a water commissioner, you had the discussion, I'm assuming.
Yep.
So why not wait till the next water commissioner?
And, and we discussed possibly passing over this till fall, but.
For the purpose of waiting for the new individual?
But he wanted to put the article on anyways, but I believe we should wait for the next superintendent, because Bruce is retiring probably February.
Is that the belief of the board, the commissioners?
Yeah, that's the way we, we left it at the last meeting.
And probably it's, it's not bad to have it on there, one, the kind of a worst town to the fact that the need is coming, and two, if something cataclysmic happens in the next month since it is an older vehicle, we have the option to do something with it.
What year is that truck, Bob, you know?
Two thousand three. But I, I believe that truck will make, make it to the next superintendent meeting, so he can maybe decide. We gave the last two su- high wa- uh, water superintendents the truck they wanted, and I think we should do that, send it for the next one, this truck will make it.
The other two members feel the same way.
Yeah?
The, the other two members feel the same way as you do.
More or less, yeah, but, like I said, Bruce wanted to throw it on, so that's why it's there.
Well, you guys are in the air, I'm gonna entertain a motion to pass over Article thirty, based on that discussion.
I think so.
You wanna make a, someone wanna make a motion to do the same?
All in favor?
Pass over it?
I'll make it.
I abstain, I don't.
Okay.
I just gave it the information.
Who wants a second to pass on this over? Oh man, I'll second. Alright, Bob seconds it, Marie. All in favor on that?
Yep.
Bob, favor?
Yep. Bob abstains, Marie.
Article thirty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer or borrow some of money to build a new addition to the cemetery center, take any action relative there too. Uh, this is with the assistance of Cantaskas as well.
We supported this.
Entertained a motion for the board to support?
Um, I'll make the motion, but I wanna ask a couple of questions.
Yeah, I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, where is this coming from? Is this coming from some of their cemetery monies that they have, or?
They're asking for, they're asking for town funds on it.
Free cash.
Because they are, are pretty tight on their, uh, on their capital improvement monies, although I don't have the fund balances, I'd have to go back into some of the old town boards.
Cause a lot of times, whenever they've done things before, it's always come like from a lot of their interest bearing accounts and things, how come they're so tight on money?
I think that was low.
It's down.
I'm saying because of the perpetual care.
Yes, it was down low.
Cause they funded a lot of the matching money for the grants for like rehab on the gate, et cetera, out of that.
They bought a tractor, remember the tractor that came on?
I believe they told us they don't have the money.
Right.
Okay, alright, I just wondered, cause that's what they, other years passed, that's what they always did, they always took money out of their interest account, right, Barbara, you agree where that's concerned?
So there's also debate whether or not they can extend the addition because of the wetlands.
Yeah.
So there is a debate still going on.
Also, they're not even sure that they can do it?
It was on our, Emery and Kenny were going at it in the street the other day, that, that there was an issue as far as the wetland.
Well, I wonder should we, when will they know should we pass this until Sept- until the special in the fall? Until we have more information?
I'm kinda, that, that's where I'm kinda hanging in.
Well, let's find out from somebody in the, before we, in the next week, before we do the Quentin on the book, yeah.
Okay.
If they need it, they need it.
Right, I mean, we, the board, our board supports, I don't know, you guys wanna do?
Also, how soon do they wanna start it?
I'm gonna entertain a motion to support it, just for the, the desire to wanna have a, have a vote on it, but, well, it's already there, we have it out there.
I think we need some more info more.
But, but that, 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 that board can vote to pass over it on the floor, in my opinion.
Yep.
So any further discussion?
I'll make the motion.
I just raised the question, uh, if they're gonna have to ask, would do it?
They are, they've already committed to it.
Then if we wait till fall, then we're into another year of the school year and so forth.
But that's, that's where, that's where their board, their, the commissioners need to come to town meeting and answer those questions, not these people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So all in favor to support it?
Aye.
Yeah, aye.
Article thirty-six, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer or borrow some of money for the normal structures to bring in the former campground of Cox Pine, land and take any action relative there, there too, amount of thirteen thousand five hundred.
Who sponsored that?
We discuss.
What's the pin, the industry commission?
Board of Selectmen.
No, is this also a free cash?
Yeah.
And now thirty-five is free, free cash too?
Yes.
Okay.
It's come, yeah, free cash.
Now, we just, um.
We didn't discuss this, didn't we?
No.
Okay, so what do you?
The last number I saw was seventeen five to cover a matching.
Yes.
That was, that was a difference.
No, this is a different one.
I know, I know, that's why we're kinda surprised, because we haven't seen this.
I remember seeing that in the pile of stuff we got.
We didn't, we didn't discuss this though. Alright, so this thirteen five is to tear down all the existing buildings at the campground, so they can do this survey with the seventeen five, plus the seventeen five to look for.
So this goes where?
Indians.
Does this go to the border health?
Yes, it's dumpsters.
Right?
Yeah, it's for dumpsters, the highway's gonna tear everything down and throw it in the dumpsters.
Dumpster, thirty-five thousand dollars for dumpsters?
No, 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 thirteen.
Thirteen.
Even thirteen five is a little.
The original estimate to finish the building is nine thousand, the guys then did the mowing and whatnot close to the wetlands, and found that the wetlands had been used as a trash can.
I went down there, it's all kind of debris, marie, and the wetlands.
Oh, so you didn't take, okay.
They've already spent six thou- five thousand, six thousand already there.
And they've done a nice job, didn't they? Looks very nice.
Dave, did your board support Article thirty-five, the cemetery addition?
Yes, we did.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so how do you wanna vote on, on the campground debris cleanup at thirteen five, is it?
Yes.
I make a motion, we, we recommend it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Entertained a motion to support Article thirty-six?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion, are we not all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I, but, uh, just, just so we're clear, I will be in Boston on Friday to meet with the Grant people.
Article thirty-seven, this was the citizen's petition, correct?
This is, yes, Mr. Boyes.
We voted already on this one. We didn't support it. So.
Was this the? It was a citizen's petition.
But we put it on as, yeah. Technically it's not, but, but the problem was, he, it, he submitted two petitions, one was illegal, basically, it would've been shot out, and he would've had multiple years to wait before he took another bite at the apple. And the second one just needed to be rewritten, so for a lack of.
So this isn't a citizen position?
For, for a lack of, for a lack of progress, the board voted to put it on as a board as opposed to the citizen's petition.
Right.
In so doing, working with us to word it the way that he wanted it to get worded.
Yeah.
Um, this, was this the final rendition?
Still confusing, yeah.
This is the final.
This is the final.
And, and it'll be on him to basically defend this article. I, I was opposed to the bylaw when it first came around, so I'd be opposed to this, you guys are opposed to it?
Yes.
So I'll entertain a motion just, uh, to support Article thirty-seven.
You support putting it on, or you?
That the motion is to support it, I don't know how the other board's gonna, how the rest of the board's gonna vote, they can vote no, like I'm gonna vote, or they can vote yes, so the motion will be to.
That's just, I'm just, it's just kinda confusing.
Well, he's just trying to be consistent, that's fine.
Alright, I'll support the motion to put it on.
Are you gonna make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'm seconding.
So again, discussion, I, I do not support this, I will be voting no on this.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be voting in favor, because I wanna congratulate Mr. Boyes for at least taking the initiative to bring.
Oh, one hundred percent, I, I think this board, especially myself, helped him in getting it to this point, so, I'm not guilty of, of helping him, I'm guilty of not supporting it.
No, and, and I'll take the second point that, that what's gone over there, I mean, both parties are probably wrong into what's gone on, but the reality is, those two vehicles shouldn't be there.
Well, the reality is, it's not just, this isn't governing just those two vehicles, it's governing the entire town.
I do have one question about it, just if we're, at least, if you've worked with him in order to support this and, and are.
Well, not to support it.
Well, not to support it, but to get down the.
To have his voice be heard as a citizen of the Towne Brookfield.
Understand, okay, the one correction I would rec- strongly recommend to the current text would be to go with a six-foot fence instead of a ten-foot fence, cause if you read our other bylaws, you can't erect anything more than a six-foot fence without going to get a zoning variance from the building committee.
No, we have to get an engineer.
This, this is, this is his desire.
Okay.
We already just.
But you can bring that up on the floor.
I'm just throwing it out there.
We've, on the planning board, we've suggested several things to them, on the bylaw committee, they've suggested several things to them. Um, I've been talking to Doug, other people have been talking to Doug, it's just a matter of three calves, it's a, it's a dispute between two neighbors. And I think what I see from my point of view, it's just gonna be hindering that commercial business in our town by putting more government intervention of more bylaws to another business trying, trying to do something in town here. All our businesses are leaving, I mean, now you're gonna say this guy's got a license though, but he has a couple of cars still hanging around. He didn't, he didn't seem to mind when the whole pack had two hundred cars over there, now the street left and he's.
Well, he, he did, he actually complained.
Oh, he complained about the use. Well, when you live, you live next to a commercial business, you have to expect whatever goes on there.
So, we have a motion, discussion's done, all in favor of supporting Article thirty-seven?
I'm in favor.
I'm not in favor, cause we got.
So the, the Board of Selectmen does not support?
Right.
Article thirty-seven with a vote of two to one.
Cause we got so little information on it tonight too, on some of the things that are.
Yes.
Article thirty-eight, to see if the town will vote to amend the town's general bylaws, and this is again bringing up the discussion we had two to three years ago with the advisory committee literally melding the capital improvement planning committee into the advisory committee and renaming it the finance committee.
We didn't discuss this one.
It's not, we voted not to support it.
Yeah.
I think we did discuss it, we voted we don't recommend it.
Marie, did we discuss this? Must've been very brief.
I remember getting the papers for it, but, um.
But we didn't just really come out and discuss it.
Yeah.
Alright, so is that what you?
I make a, I make a motion, well, I'll make the motion in the form of to recommend it, since that's the format that we're using.
No, do we support it or...
Does anyone, well, recommending would be supporting it, so does anyone want a second for discussion?
Thank you, Beth.
We already talked about this, and we voted support.
Right.
Well, there's been, there's been no second.
There's been no second, right. I'll second it for discussion. Okay, you second it for discussion, all right, what do you guys want to talk about?
I do, I do not support this, I do not recommend it.
On what basis?
Yeah.
Did you, you realize it's literally the same exact language?
Okay, so...
Not exactly.
Let's see here, where do we want to start?
Barbara, you got anything to say about this?
I think it's just the way it is.
Okay.
I think there's a, I think there's a couple of different, I, I think there's a couple of different problems with it. One of them being the fact that we really currently barely have the bandwidth, there's, there's been a lot of discussions, first of all, we have been doing the budget for off and on for probably, from what I understand, about thirty years in this town. However, I think from a, I, I don't think delegating the budget to the advisory committee is necessarily, um, the way that selectmen can really be involved and knowledgeable about what's going on down in the departments. Okay, and, and they're the executive, so while we have been doing the budget, I think directing that the budget be developed by the selectmen robs you all of some of the conversations that we've been having with the departments that would be useful to you as the executive of the town. So that's one of my personal objections to this.
Well, to answer that, we have those discussions because they're coming to us when money issues arise, I think everyone on this board is pretty much aware of every request that each private has, because they bring it to us, if not personally, to the entire board. Um, in regards to the committee developing the budget, I sat on the advisory committee, and in town meeting, I had the chairman to the left of me, and a member to the right of me, that were that close of getting up and leaving, because all the work that they've done was superseded by the three select board members, without any discussion whatsoever. And, and one of the changes in this is, it labels the finance, now finance committee to devise a budget. And if you remember, two or three years ago, there were like three or four different budgets out there, and we mainstreamed that, where you guys are doing the budget, and it, and it works. I think we have a pretty good grasp on what's going on in town.
So right now, the bylaw reads what? You, selectmen are supposed to be doing the budget, but yet the advisory board doesn't?
I don't think it even reads that, I don't think there's anything in the bylaws.
No, the bylaw says that we'll just advise on the warrant with regards to things that relate to proposition two and a half.
And, and every other...
Which, which, anything pertaining to two and a half is really...
Budget-related.
It, it could be, it could include the entirety of the operating budget, because as, as we see in some of our neighboring towns, if you fail to, you know, control your overall expenses, you wind up going to the town for exclusions and overrides. So, and the second piece of it that, that, um, you know, I, I really don't support, and I really wish we'd had this conversation perhaps when this was getting drafted, is the fact that it says that we'll provide a capital improvement, I guess, annual report to the selectmen. Previously, that capital improvement report was supposed to be provided to the town meeting, okay?
Where those accept a committee?
And it was never actually presented, even when there was a, a, a report that was developed, it never was presented to the town meeting. So, I, I think that we...
I think that committee...
Need to start by adhering to what was originally in our bylaws, and...
I think that committee met once in the whole existence of that bylaw, and hasn't met since. So the bylaw has just moved.
So...
And that's a desire to implement all of that function within one finance committee, and I don't see how that's a bad thing.
Well, be, well, I, just a, an opinion, as you all know, and as everybody has seen over the past number of years, the reason that that capital improvement committee has become moot is because our town has severe limitations as to what we can do toward that end. Which is why we've been, as, as much as it may irritate some people, we've been taking it department by department and looking at each department's needs, and who has the most severe and pressing needs, and we address that department that year. Sometimes you can squeeze in more than one, but...
But that's, that's the argument for that, that function that you're already doing.
But a lot of times, we don't know what we have to, to work with until we get numbers back from this step.
That's why we want, that's why we want to implement this.
I think it's understood, though, that having that capital improvement committee is to have, you know, the foresight down the road, we don't always have the foresight down the road.
But that's why you want to implement into a new committee, which will be the finance committee, that will be charged with that. That there will be a hump, there'll be a hurdle for the first correlation of all that information, but once you get it, it'll just run smoothly.
I, well, I think when we're, when we're not correctly, um, able to, what is it?
Well, well, one of the, one of the, one of the challenges is, is the fact that we, we, we have not previously, we collectively, advisory committee and board of selectmen, have not previously generated any type of five-year revenue projection that would include the tax levy, that would include local receipts, that would include potential, you know, funding, whether it's, whether it's... And, and without, without planning both sides of that equation, okay, with, without communicating and having cogent conversations about both the, the revenue and the cost side of the equation, you can't put together a capital plan. So until we get a little more rigor around...
But you're, you're making, and Marie's making the argument to start something like this, and now's the perfect time to do it.
I, I don't support it until we have some cogent financial guidance.
Guidance through what? This, this would, this would be the procedure?
No, that's not a procedure.
It is a procedure.
That's, that's an allocation of, of the work and responsibility off of the board of selectmen to the volunteers in the town to do it, and, which would be great, except that we've been having a hard time filling the board, we don't have a lot of people with the, the, the skills to do that type of capital planning, and we haven't been able to get accurate revenue reports for as long as I've been on the advisory committee. So, until we have all of those pieces and can do that planning, I, I'd, I'd rather, let's have the conversation upfront, we need to get accurate revenue forecasts, and we need to start...
We've been having this conversation for at least three, if not four years, so why not take action now? Why not move forward with it?
Stabilize your internal financial team first, and then build the structure around it.
All right, so they voted not to support it, I'm going to entertain a motion to support article thirty-eight?
When we've been on, I mean, some of us have been on that committee before.
You were on the committee, Dave was on the committee.
And it all fell apart.
And I was on it too, and that, way back.
It just fell apart, because we just couldn't...
There's no money.
There's, right, there's no funds.
You know, we would lay it out there, and it would sound good, and then you would have people come in and say, well, I put it on there three years in a row, and I haven't got it yet. So it makes you seem like, well, what have we done? We've done nothing.
But that, this puts a format together, and it shows what we are doing.
But we still don't have the figures, we don't have the people to give us the figures, this is what we're up against, we, we beg, we, we, we do everything to get what we need to do something, we can't.
So the, to me, the... To me, the, to me, the perfect storm is working, I have, I have Deb Boyd telling me that she is extremely happy that we finally got Betty to reconcile with her, she said Sandy is coming a long way, that the school's reconciled with the town, which is great. Um, having Betty retire and bringing in a new individual allows us to train the way that we need to train, and we all get on the same page, I think this would just be the perfect storm to move forward in a positive manner.
I mean, we, we are doing capital proving on this committee, and we know what every department needs, and we are discussing, and then when the free cash comes up, we say, well, who, who should get what first, and what's important.
And this, this puts...
So we are doing it, Steve.
This, this, and this allows you, this allows you to start and to improve, implement your own procedures on how you want to do it, in, in regards to best comments. I just, I see this as a win-win, it takes away something, it takes away something that's non-existent, you guys are already saying you're doing it, in the same breath, saying that you can't do it, I don't know.
Well, given the, the current change in situation with the town accountant, that, to me, throws a little bit more of a cloud over this for the present, because that's not...
But this isn't to say that we're going to hold your feet to the fire and say, where's my report? We, we, we have, we have a bylaw, we have a bylaw on, on our books that already says this section two. It's not being done, we don't have a sitting committee for this. This allows us to move forward in a positive manner.
I think this is a good time to do it, too.
I mean, it's a good, it's a good thing, but I mean, we don't, how much, how much time can, you know, this committee can put forth, you know?
As much time as you can, Dave.
Well, that's what we're trying to do.
That's it, that's it, I don't think any, I don't think any of these...
When the budget season's done, that's when we could probably do it.
I've seen, I've seen four or five people rotate through these seats, and I don't think anyone's criticized the advisory committee on what you've done and what you haven't done, I think we commend everyone for what you do. And you don't do it for five hundred dollars a year.
I don't get anything, a lot of aggravation, I don't make friends.
More enemies.
You wouldn't make friends whether you run this committee or not, Dave, come on. Don't blame me on the advisory committee.
So blame it, I got to blame it on somebody or something.
For sake of time, you guys already voted on this, so...
I vote no.
Well, you guys already have, apparently, so I'm going to entertain a motion for the board of selectmen to support article thirty-eight.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, we'll do, Steve, we'll discuss this again on our next meeting.
I'd ask, I'd ask that you would, I think it's, I think it's a good, it's a good time to do it.
Look over it again.
Yeah, now that we've got, you know, it's really spelled out here.
Article thirty-nine, the city of the, of the vote, see if the town will vote to accept the following changes in chapter fifteen personnel, personnel bylaw, taking action relative there too. Um, I've had a discussion with Attorney Mandazzo, she's asking that we pass over, Linda is advising that she ask...
That we don't pass over right off, we leave it on, because she's getting back to me again tomorrow with some new ideas with it, so it's a possibility, we might leave it on, or we could pass it over that night, and we'll put it on in the fall. Because we've worked very hard on this, we've been working since last summer on it, and we just didn't come up with changes, you know, we just didn't pull them from the sky. We looked at a lot of different communities, so we went by the town of Wales, we went by North Brookfield and Barry, to get a lot, to go with our personnel handbook, that's what we got.
Through discussion implementing this, we put the town in a, withhold the town liable for a lot of things, so...
Well, Michelle is going to, um, she's going to put a lot of it out more, so the rest of the board understands it. So for now, I would like to leave it on, and if we want to pass over...
Well, that's a discussion, yeah, so I'm, I'm going to entertain a motion, do we want to support it, or we want to pass over it? So I'm going to entertain a motion for consistency to support article thirty-nine, so I have a motion to support article thirty-nine?
I have a motion, I'll, I'll make the motion.
Give us a second. Through discussion with Attorney Mandazzo last week, I am voting not to support article thirty-nine.
I'm voting to support it as of now.
All in favor of supporting?
I'm, I'm, I'm voting against moving forward until we have a clarification from...
So do you want to support it or...
I do not want to support it at this time.
So, we, the board does not support it with a two to one vote?
How do you guys want to, how do you guys?
Um, well, I'm, I'm a little confused.
They're trying to do a new, I'm, I'm, I'm...
So we do not support it.
I'm going to be, I'm going to be packed, where Clarence is packed, as he always says. We need to get more clarification of what they're doing in this book.
I'll make them.
Hang on a minute, Beth, before we, before I vote, I want to know exactly what all this means.
Now, why would you want to delete the following sections?
We have taken, and we have...
Yeah, you have them in a different place.
We have them in different places.
But you're taking this out of context, and I like to see the whole thing before we vote.
Well, the reason that we put it like this was because it was suggested by, by Steve to put, that we would delete all of these, because it would have been too long to put the whole personnel bylaw in here.
Dude, well, my understanding was, was that it, as I read through this, it, it looks like we're deleting a bunch of the bylaw and then substituting it with a handbook.
Yeah.
So is a copy of that handbook, a draft copy of that handbook, available to...
Didn't we send my card?
It is available, but it's a draft.
I, I haven't, I haven't seen the draft, has it, have you received the draft?
I thought the draft was sent out to you.
I, I think that puts the horse before the car.
That's why you...
Car before the horse.
That's why I'm going to be packed next to Clarence's type.
And that's why I was going to make a motion to recommend passing it over until the law...
But, her, her board doesn't want to do that.
They don't want to do that. And, and we're getting a ruling, like I said, town council is sending me something else tomorrow, and then I will know better whether or not we'll pass over it on town.
Pass that along to us, then, and could we get a draft of the personnel handbook?
Yes, I will, Karen, do you have the draft?
What do you all want to do? You want, someone want to make a motion to pass over it or accept it? I'll make a motion to pass over. Someone want to second it, to pass over this?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Linda, do you want me to wait until, before I give the votes and get them out?
I can't make catch a...
I would like them to see a copy now.
It's a review draft, it's not a published copy.
No, I would like them to have it.
You guys have done a lot of good work.
Yeah, we've done a lot of good work to it.
Article forty, well, and that, see, that's not, everybody seems no is a negative, that this is a liability issue, we can't set the town up for that liability.
Oh, I understand that, Steve, but she's going to write something up tomorrow that I will give to the rest of the board.
Correct, because Linda doesn't want to even have the discussion to pass over. Article forty, to see if the town, to see if the town shall require that full-time police officers complete full-time police officer academy training prior to being hired by the town of Brookfield to take any action relative there too. Have your board, has your board talked about those?
Yes, we support it, yes.
Unanimously?
No.
And it's five to one. I'm going to entertain a motion to support article forty. Do I have a motion to support article forty?
Uh, I'll make that motion.
I'm not going to second it.
I'm going to second for discussion?
Well, the city of the town, please.
I think it ties the chief's hands, the labor market that's tightening up.
The town.
Now, even I saw there might have been some room to take a look at, and I don't know if you're in the midst of negotiations, or not.
Well, the contract, we had this discussion when the officer left, trained by the town of Brookfield, paid by the town of Brookfield while he was being trained.
Six months.
Fought, fought for by the, by the board to keep him there because he was sick, sat in front of the board and said he'll never leave, and then left. So I'm, I have bad taste in my mouth.
Right, but, you know, it'd be one thing if we were paying maybe a different rate while they're in school, I don't know that, that...
I don't think you can.
Yeah, but a lot, we've had this happen, Beth, for many years, this isn't just the first time we've had it, it's, it's been going...
That's why I'm saying, there might be some options depending on, and, and you, you probably can't under the current contract, but is there any, is there any option to mitigate our risk in the future from a standpoint of having a, a, a training starting salary if someone's coming in without the academy? Versus a fully qualified starting salary and we're not paying for their training, you see what I'm saying? Because our reserve officers get paid one rate that is, is not controlled contractually, our full-time officers have a different starting salary, you know, is there, is there a way to, to at least work in some protection to the town from a standpoint of what we're paying while they're in school if, if we don't go this route?
But at the same time, I don't want to be a stepping stone for...
We've been, we, like you're saying, we've been a stepping stone too many times over the years, we, I can even tell you to go back twenty-five years, Beth, we've had people, um, towns have trained them and they've left.
The, the...
And I mean, I don't think it's fair to the townspeople here to be paying their, their tax dollars to support somebody, so it's like Steve said, it's a stepping stone so that they go to another community.
Right, but currently, and I, I think this is the piece we need to understand, and, and speaks back to the labor market, is, I know other towns experience the same thing, I'm not saying it's right, and I'm not saying, I, I, I think it's appropriate behavior, okay? But currently, one of kind of like the standard hiring practices is towns pay for the academy when they're hiring full-time officers, and frequently, you know, in a smaller town, you're going to get somebody who's not necessarily academy-trained, because the money's in other towns, it's in bigger towns, and, and some of them will pay people off the street to go to the academy as well. Are you aware of any towns, like, do we know how many towns in the state of Massachusetts?
This is a citizens petition.
It's a citizens petition.
No, I, I understand it, I'm just saying from a supporting it, I'm saying from a, I'm saying from a supporting it perspective, I'm not saying from a placement, it's a citizens petition, it needs to be on there, it's a good discussion, you're absolutely right, we've gotten burnt, and I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers. But it's uniformly unfair to the taxpayers right now, because it's a standard practice in the market, that this is what communities do when they hire police officers.
But we have had people come in, we've had a lot of people come in that have paid for these courses themselves before they've applied for these positions.
That's not the norm, that is not the norm when you get hired to go, get put through the town, it's going to put you through.
The past few have been trained prior to...
So sometimes you do, sometimes you don't, so, it is, now, what does the chief express to you as a, as a board?
Exactly what Clarence stated, he doesn't want his hands tied, recommends possibly putting into a contract.
But he also came before this town last year and said that this guy that we just put through was not going to be leaving.
I bet he's feeling pretty burnt, right?
He does.
He does, and, and he let, he went to North Brookfield, and North Brookfield just lost three guys that they just put through school.
Well, none of us, none of us literally found out, none of us literally found out until we saw our Facebook post. Well, none of us, none of us literally found out, none of us literally found out until we saw our Facebook post.
That he left?
That he left.
Well, if, if, if nothing more, at least the town's taxpayers will see what's going on in the different departments, and this is one thing, last year when I brought it up, if you remember, people did not know that they were shelling out this kind of money. Also, you have to remember, if we hire this guy and he takes off and goes into the academy, now we have to hire another officer, part-time officer, to fill his hours. In the meantime, we're still paying him for forty hours for six months, and we also come up with three, four grand to put him into the academy. So I mean, as long as the taxpayers know this is going on, if they think it's okay, that's fine. But at least they're gonna have an option at the town meeting to say yes or no to this, this practice, you know?
So Clarence, you still sold on?
It's the police chief's decision.
I'm gonna let him make that, well, it's, it's the board of selectmen's decision, because we voted.
Ultimately, but, but again, let him manage his vote.
I support it.
So is the motion, no more, just for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I support it, and you don't support it?
No.
Board of Selectmen supports it two to one.
Yep.
And how did the advisory board do, are they all for...
We all put one.
All put one, okay.
Article forty-one, to see if the town shall require that part-time police officers complete part-time police officer academy...
Wait a minute, excuse me, Steve, no, we don't support it, Linda.
Oh, you're not support...
We don't support it.
You don't support it?
No, 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 I mean, we, we support putting it on.
I know it's past nine o'clock.
Yeah, we put, we support putting it on, but we don't support passing it at the town meeting. Five of us said no, that we don't wanna pass it.
Were you in agreement again?
No, we were in favor...
No, you were in favor on full-time and not on hard-time.
We were in favor of this being required.
Oh, that's, okay, that's, okay, that's what I meant to say.
I knew we weren't in agreement.
Right, I knew we weren't in agreement, okay, all right, as long as that's clear.
Are you still parked there, David?
And we got, we got...
No, no, I wasn't parked there, I was, I was for the handbook, not for this.
Are we past your bedtime?
Or past my bedtime?
Item forty-one, to see if the town shall require that part-time police officers complete part-time police officer academy training prior to being hired by the town of Brookfield, taking action a little there, too. Did you guys vote on this?
Yes.
We support this, okay.
You support it?
Come on.
Okay, well, we're gonna go with this.
But I wanna see, at the meeting, I wanna see if we can amend this a little bit, saying that if someone does get hired as a part-timer, and they're, and they're going through the classes, you know, during that time at their expense, then it would be okay for them to get hired, as long as they're going through the classes on their own time.
In progress, in progress.
Right, in progress. Can I do, can I make that amendment at the town meeting?
I don't see why not, just present it to the moderator in town.
The intent is just so the town doesn't have to, to, to pay, that's all, right?
So I'm gonna...
Well, and then the only, oh, okay.
But then it's the issue of them getting a paycheck while they, so they wouldn't be, or, you know, no, they could be hired at the...
They could be working weekends and then going to this part-time academy.
Right, because they're part-time.
Right.
Right.
So, but then at that point, would they become eligible for our town's reimbursement for classes pertaining to your job skills, even though they're a part-time officer? So, so as part of our current Personnel Bylaw, if people are taking training and the, and budget exists for it, now that's where the, it gets a little hairy, because if we don't know the person...
Well, it has to be a full-time position, doesn't it?
Well, would it? Or does it?
I don't know how it's worded.
It's under education, so.
It's under education.
All right, so maybe we should...
I don't know that it has to, I'll pull it up, I don't know that they have to be...
It's a good point.
Full-time and benefit eligible.
I can't remember what.
I may not wanna amend that. Okay, all right, so anyway, the, our board recommends putting it on, but we don't support it?
Yes, we do support it.
I mean, we, yeah, I mean, we support, support the way it reads.
Get him a bottle of tea.
Get him a bottle of...
I need a Snapple is what I need, I need a Snapple, Marie.
So I'm gonna entertain a motion to support Article forty-one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second for discussion.
Um, I didn't know there was a huge history of this, can anyone...
Yeah.
Educate me that this has been abused?
I didn't know.
So they don't...
No, I'm gonna actually have to abstain, because my son-in-law is actually talking to the chief to actually volunteer to pay to go to this training, to be as a volunteer.
So do you have any work knowledge that the town, I don't, I don't ever remember, I don't ever remember the town.
I know, now I know of two people who have actually paid their way to do this.
But the town, not at the town's expense.
Not at the town's expense.
So this is, all right, so with no further discussion, all in favor of supporting Article forty-one? All opposed to Article forty-one?
Aye.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain.
So the board of selectmen does not support Article forty-one. Article forty-two, to see if the town shall require that a notification be posted on the town comm prior to any, in all elections, the town meetings, taking action a little there, too, did you guys vote on this? We didn't vote on this, no.
It's just going back to getting your old town choir that will start reading your...
That would be cool, I'd pay for that, I'd do it, hear ye, hear ye.
All right, so this is basically...
That's how it was done years ago.
This is, somebody brought this up, it's basically because the sign didn't get put out there this past election, and they, well, we wanna make sure...
So we wanna put in a, we wanna put in the bylaws that the town clerk has to do it, so when he doesn't do it, what ramifications are there? None?
We could find him.
Do we, do we whip him on it, do we get some locks and stocks?
Well, we could either whip him or tie him, feather him.
Well, then it goes on record that he did not follow the bylaw, how about that?
Oh, come on, find him.
The whole, the intent, I think, whoever put this in is to make sure that the sign gets put out there.
I'm surprised the sign wasn't out there.
I think a simple discussion and understanding that there's might be some things going on in lives and situations and...
But this is an election process, and the people have become reliant on that sign.
Every, every time you have the sign, you need a sign.
We have a sign, he just didn't put it up.
I can't, the same way you didn't.
A hundred people showed it, Steve, and a lot of people didn't even know it was an election sign. People are busy, they don't...
I'm not happy about it.
But who, who noticed it was missing? If it was missing, why didn't they...
I noticed it myself.
Why didn't they go to the town clerk and say, hey, your sign's not out?
He wasn't in the building.
He wasn't...
Well, go to the selectmen and say your sign...
It's generally supposed to be...
It's not a sign.
...the time before an election, right?
I used to get it out there at least a week or better before the election.
And the wonder why I heard was, well, it was posted in the Citizen, well, apparently not everybody reads the Citizen, because there were many complaints that they didn't even know there was an election going on.
I know a lot of people, because I, I came up that day, and I said to somebody, aren't you gonna vote? And they said, vote for what?
Vote for what?
I said, the town election's going on, oh, we didn't know that.
And that's not a good thing.
All right, so do you guys support it or not support it?
Yes, we do.
You're just gonna speak unanimously for everyone, or?
I'll make a motion to support...
I'm speaking for myself, and now I'm letting someone make a motion.
I'll make a motion to support this article.
Someone wanna second it?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Robert, are you in favor of this?
No.
Did you just say no?
You're not in favor of requiring the sign be put on the common?
I stay with the fact that I think the communication in this town has gotta get on the ball, and instead of making all these rules and regulations and so forth, go to the people and talk to them.
Okay, well, this is a form of communication...
Yes.
That people have relied on for many years, I'm just saying, it is a form of communication that people are relying on.
And then a robo-call wasn't made either, in other years, it's been a robo-call.
Well, you did the robo-calls, unless you have someone's cell phone number...
We have every number, that's true.
You're still gonna, you know...
So you guys support it by majority?
Yes.
I'm gonna say no, too, I'm actually...
So it's two to, two to four?
You said who else said no?
No.
Two to four, two not two. So it's, we, majority, we support it.
So I'm gonna entertain a motion to support Article forty-two?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second for discussion.
I'll second if it's discussion.
Cause we really need discussion, I think we know how we're gonna vote, don't we?
Yeah, we do.
So I'm gonna take a call now, we good, no discussion?
Oh, yeah.
So all, all in favor of supporting Article forty-two?
No.
All opposed to supporting Article forty-two? Unanimously, board of selectmen does not support Article forty-two.
I think we should talk to them.
I think everybody in this room has.
Although if manages to get them, I still wanna find him at least a dollar.
Why don't you put the stocks, I'll build, I'll build some stocks.
To me, no, to me, that makes a joke of the people's lack of, you know, verification and their ability to give their voice during the vote. That, that's making a mockery of the process, if you ask me, and shameful.
I, I don't agree that it's a mockery, I, I think...
Well, saying find him a dollar, or put him in stocks, that's making a mockery of it.
So, again, it brings it back to the discussion, what teeth does that bylaw have?
What does any bylaw teeth have? Some have it, some don't?
It brings, it brings attention to the fact that people are complaining that they didn't get to vote.
We all just brought attention to it, and the irony is he just got re-elected as town clerk in that vote.
But, well, it's, it's an issue, it probably won't become an issue again, because now it's also been made known to him that people are unhappy about that.
It's, it's the first time in how many years that he's served this town?
I get it, I get it.
How many elections and town meetings?
I get it, but it's the essential function of government to notify...
I, I don't, I don't disagree that it was wrong, but he's, he's a human being, he made one mistake, and we're gonna have a knee-jerk...
I went and checked the next day after the meeting.
And then, I mean, another thing, he didn't leave any notification who even got in this year, and I think that was wrong, and I called him out on that, too. You're supposed to take and post one of your ballots and let people know who got in these offices. And I called up the next morning to see what the vote was, and there was nothing here. And that's something, another thing is gonna be talked to about.
Oh, I get it, but in the scheme of things, I think that can be rectified very readily, but once an election has gone by, that can't be fixed.
Well, we'll talk to them about it.
Like you say, I'm sure everybody has, but...
It's getting late, can we?
Yes.
I'm looking for a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to adjourn and go over this another night.
Well, when would you like to go over, because we don't wanna be, I wanna make sure we have enough time to print this.
Want to do Tuesday night, our next meeting?
Yeah, our next meeting on Tues, on Tuesday.
A week from tomorrow?
Ooh, now, see, now we're getting...
So we need to have the discussion...
Before then.
So here's the problem, is that from a standpoint of getting the books done, did he give you amount of time he needs to get it done?
No, but I, I, I want us, I want us to take, the whole board take, and review it, before it goes to the printer. I want us to, we actually say, okay, this is what's gonna be printed, and now all of us agree on it.
So the one piece that we probably need an answer before then, from a standpoint of just the physical changes I'm gonna have to make to that spreadsheet, to get it to the printer in time.
To carry, yep.
And I am one person, and I will need somebody to, to cross-check me and edit me, okay? Is what are we doing about salaries?
Well, we're gonna need a discussion before this, right?
Well, I mean, that's the, that's the, that's the thing that will change the largest number of lines on this document, and if I don't have an answer tonight, quite frankly, I'm...
And you have nothing in here?
Well, are we gonna, are we gonna agree to putting that in, or are we gonna do it amended after we go to the town, on the town floor?
You have nothing in here currently, right?
We don't want to do that.
That's how it's always been done.
No, but usually we have something in there.
All right, so did you guys take a vote on it?
On, on the calls? Is that your question?
Yes.
Yes, I think it was one percent.
You voted as a board to...
And you know that's gonna be amended on the floor.
We never voted, we never voted it.
I don't remember us voting what you said, it was brought up.
We had, we had a discussion about it, we did not approve it.
No, we did, we did vote that. All right, when we vote, we, I know we voted it.
All right, so...
It was five to one.
Could we meet?
No, we did vote it, Marie, Beth didn't, Beth was the only one that didn't vote it.
We're right down to our deadlines again.
What?
We're right down to our deadlines again.
I know, I don't want to get another...
By, by the nose.
So let's get back to the question, guys, of when can we meet with you again, soon?
Well, we have to break two days to post legally.
Okay.
Because I think it's too late to, to go working on this now.
Well, I agree with you, Linda, you're saying, but we can't wait till next week.
If I, if I can say, I think some of our problem with this whole thing is that it would shorten the length of time that we're spending here, like, tonight, going over all this and thrashing it out and everything, if we could get together, and when we have a meeting, we have a representative from the select board that comes to our meeting, and I know that's another meeting for you and us.
No, not at all, I'll vote as many as you want, but if you have one, Clarence is gonna vote differently, then I'm gonna vote, and it's not even, it's not even a vote.
I don't, I don't mean vote.
It's not even a vote, he's gonna have one, he's gonna have one different opinion than Linda's.
I don't even, I don't even want to vote.
I'm on, I'm on the phone with David.
There, Clarence.
I'm on the phone with David, who's your chair, probably two or three times a day.
But I'm saying, when you sit in, if some representative, just like at the school committee meetings, we used to yell about it all the time, if you had a representative from the town at that meeting to carry the message back to you people, we wouldn't be here thrashing it out so much.
But you're an autonomous board, you have three elected members on the school committee, you don't need a selectman sitting in on, you don't need an advisory committee member sitting on every meeting.
It helps.
Maybe during budget season.
It helps, during budget season, that's what I mean, I don't mean every meeting, all year long.
The only issue that we have here right now is...
Through budget season, we, if we could get together and have somebody attend our meetings, they carry it back to you, you discuss it, and then when we get together, we know where we're going.
But I carry everything back to this board through your chair, chair to chair, and that's the way it's always been done, Peter's as chair of this board.
I know, and we're always right to the deadline trying to get these books out there to the people.
Now, how mu...
I've, I've even done them on a day, I have to go out.
How long of a time does he need to get this?
To what?
To get this to Hughes and Gary Fuller again?
Yeah, out of North Brookfield.
I mean, he, he's very obliging, but that's not the point, we shouldn't put him on the spot every time.
All I can do is, I'm gonna alert him of when we think we're gonna have it, and he'll be ready for us, a few days.
You have over three weeks.
Yeah.
Well, we had this discussion last fall about...
And then you've got your departments, the departments, they don't know any of this, because they didn't show up.
The departments know all of it, trust me.
Yeah, and then they're gonna go to the town floor, and they'll amend half of it.
And there's, there's nothing we can do about that, we've done our due diligence.
And we did our diligence.
And Clarence, Clarence is meeting with the department heads, who's rumored to be bringing up that discussion with him.
Well, when I...
Town people vote.
Well, we had a, if I could say, we had a roundtable discussion last month, and they said that they would like to know, before the book is printed, they would like to know whether or not...
Why wasn't the advisory board alerted to that? Why wasn't there a member present that could sit there with all these people and be there?
You have your chair that attends every meeting, why isn't he bringing this back to you?
I was not notified of that roundtable discussion.
That roundtable meeting, we were not notified about.
Mister Chief, Mister Chief, Mister Chief...
Karen sent it out to everybody.
And Mister Chief, he sat in that chair right there while they were sitting in that chair, and said the same exact thing in a board of selectmen's meeting.
But did you do it?
Huh?
Did you notify him?
We haven't, we haven't had this discussion yet, the notification was maybe if we didn't place it.
But everybody knew.
I'm gonna be at this next one.
They're at everyone, good.
I tried, I tried to be, I tried to be at the department head, but I wasn't notified.
But Karen sent to notice out to everybody that we were having a depart, it was a roundtable, it was an informal one.
Twenty-six or the thirty-first?
No, it's the end of the month, it's around the first.
Thirty-first, okay, well, that's the one I'm gonna...
And one of their requests was, before this went into print, they would like to know if their budget that they handed to you was approved of. And if, if it wasn't, I'd get on town floor that night and see that you hadn't approved their budget that they submitted to you.
Oh, that's good.
I think the only, well, for the most part, the most, the only thing, one of the only things, there might have been some other minor things, but we asked that everyone submit their budget level funding, um, as far as wages goes.
We're not talking about wages, we're talking about budget.
But that's part, but that's part of their budget, budget.
But their budget, did you...
But they're not just talking about the...
Did you guys slash any of their budget that they submitted?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, and they wanted to know, they wanna know before this goes into print and before that they find this out on town hall four.
Did you advise them that you slashed their budget?
Some of them, yes, we did.
Can you advise all of them?
No, I don't think so.
You can't advise?
Because we're not, because we haven't got everything compiled yet, so...
So what have you slashed? Off the top of your head?
Any biggies.
Clerks, hours, uh...
Well, one of the biggest changes was probably the seasonal worker for highway, because they established a budget by multiplying up from whatever wage rate it was.
Fifteen to twelve.
Discussion between...
That was just one, that was just one thing, yeah.
But they're, they're aware of that discussion, they know what's going on.
Right. So, so before it gets printed, I'm gonna be at that roundtable, and if they have any questions. And they're also welcome to come to our board at a given time.
Your budget for legal, I think we slashed.
And you didn't advise us of that?
That's the chair, right?
Right.
Well, now you're telling me you've got a council chair there, Steve.
Fired.
Um, I, you said you slashed a lot of clerks.
That's correct, hours.
Not a, not a lot.
From the discussion, I think there was just two. Well, not even one, oh yeah, two clerks.
Did you pass, did you pass a clerk for the accountant?
We, uh, put it in half, I think it was half, almost in half.
Because I had just, one of my calls had just, I had to go out on this call. And who I talked to, it was the auditor. He thinks, he says in most of your communities, he said that you have, they have clerks, uh, the accountants at least for ten to fifteen hours a week. And they help with a lot of the posting that they do, and then they said this clerk can fall in and take the accountant's place if something happens to the accountant. And he said you need somebody with more than five hours a week.
And that's what we're discussing right now, but through your discussion, we had a CPA that's been here for over a decade.
Yep.
So this conversation changes. We've had this, we've had this conversation, getting, getting an accountant, and it's not out of, out of really necessity. I think it's where we wanna go is, is lower hours with a clerk to do some of the work.
With the clerk, they said, he said it's necessary, necessary that they have a clerk.
We had this discussion before that conversation.
That's all filing, if you ever...
But five hours isn't gonna get you any place.
But the thing is, the, the position originally was based on thirty-six hours.
Exactly, but this is changing now.
It's gonna be changing, because he...
I'm gonna tell you right, I'm gonna tell you right here, right here in public. The work was not getting done. We were not getting figures, books were not getting reconciled. You can say whatever you wanna say about having clerks or not having clerks, the work was not getting done from that office, okay? So if you're gonna put a clerk in there, you're gonna have a clerk who knows what is going on in that office, not just someone doing some small stuff. You've got a good person in there now, but if you're gonna start getting into what the town accountant does, that person's gonna have to have some working knowledge of being a town accountant. You're just not gonna put someone in there.
What do you mean, the working isn't a town accountant? You mean the clerk?
No.
Well, the accountant, they have to have municipal experience, you just can't go hiring a regular CPA.
If that's the point, and there's work to be done, and the clerk is gonna help get the work done, but we can't, but I say the work is not getting done.
Well, I'm not gonna talk against somebody to just...
I'm not talking against anybody, I'm talking in general, we've been talking about this for years. And this advisory board says, Dave, you got the figures? No, I couldn't get the figures. You got the figures? No, it's not done yet. And, and, and I'm just tired of, tired of that, and that's it, I'm just, I'm ready to run again.
I'm just curious how, how much less hours are...
Well, I was just talking to the auditor, he said twenty hours he feels sufficient for a town this size.
That's, that's, so...
No foreign accountant.
And how many hours?
You're talking ten to fifteen hours.
But you need, no, but you need...
Then that leaves you fifteen hours for a clerk, so that you, then you have a backup person.
Working with you in the office, that's why he suggests. He says most of your communities have the clerk, so they could jump right in.
But if the job wasn't getting done before, supposedly...
I'm not commenting on anything, Marina, I don't think you should be either.
So, so, so let's not even go there.
I don't think you should be.
So let's just, let's just accept the fact that in most towns, it's between a thirty and thirty-five hour a week job. We previously allocated that all to the actual town accountant. And what's currently under review is to mirror similar sized towns, which is a twenty hour a week position for the accountant.
And I take his, and I take his judgment very highly.
And, and, no one's, no one's disputing, no one's disputing, no one's disputing. I, I, I'm totally concurring with what you're saying, and I'm just trying to kinda diffuse the whole conversation about done not getting done, it's thirty-five, thirty-six hours a week work. How we choose to split that up between an accountant and accountant clerk, if what we're talking about is redistributing that structure, then that would put me on the other side of the fence from where I was at, because frankly, what I would have preferred to see, if we were gonna go even ten hours a week on the accountant clerk, was to actually still pile that into municipal clerk funds, so in the instance of like, someone go out for, you know, a surgery, or they break their leg skiing, or what have you, it would have given you that flexibility as the board of selectmen to reallocate that person to another department, okay? So, but if what we're saying is that we need that specialized technical knowledge, even at a clerk level, and we've already been allocating thirty-six hours a week to the role, then maybe now is the time to restructure the budget to have the accountant and the clerk as two separate line items and have that overall department have two lines.
That was, that was the argument we were gonna make before even this happened, and at the same time Friday. And I'm, I'm glad that, that someone of Mr. Scanlon's reputation mirrors our decision that we made Friday. So it just proves that we're working on it.
Well, and the additional information that we've got today, my sources.
So we're on the same page, pretty much.
Right, so...
So those, those numbers are gonna change, a line's gonna be added, so when, when do we wanna meet again? I think Tuesday would be fine, if we have three weeks, I think we have more than enough time.
Now we're ticking another week away. What's that, what's the Tuesday's date, what, what?
The twenty-fourth.
Huh?
Next Tuesday, the twenty-fourth.
So how many days does that leave us to the town meeting, ten plus?
That'll work, that, that'll work.
No, no, I'm not so sure, that's gonna work, because I know what's gonna happen, something, we've fouled up, and we're gonna lose another four.
You have two and a half weeks, Dave.
We're meeting Friday?
Huh?
We're meeting Friday, or do we say no until Monday?
We schedule for Friday?
It was last Friday that we decided not to.
Right, last Friday we were...
So we're meeting this Friday?
Yeah.
And then again Monday?
We can pick another day, this week.
Where've we got?
We're getting, how about Thursday?
It would have to be Thursday.
Thursday's Friday.
We were scheduled to meet on Wednesday at seven-thirty.
This Wednesday?
Yes.
This Wednesday.
All right.
Not seven-thirty, seven, that was from the two Wednesdays ago.
Yeah, we're not scheduled for Wednesday, we're not, we don't have anything scheduled currently.
So it'd have to be Thursday?
Thursday, that's from, for the posting time.
Yeah.
What's it saying here, Bob, does it say we're posted?
Oh, I'm just saying, of course, I'm teaching at two, six-thirty.
Okay.
That's why I said I could make it, it's seven-thirty, he said yes.
Okay, we can do, we can do Wednesday then.
You can, it's not posted.
It's not posted.
Oh, Thursday, it's not posted, Bob?
Gotta go Thursday.
Oh, I thought you said it, okay, so Thursday then.
What time?
At seven.
And we'll meet as a joint...
He won't be there till seven-thirty, just so you know.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna be there, teacher.
No, no.
Teacher, you like to meet twenty-four?
I'm not gonna make it.
And that's a Tuesday?
That's our next meeting.
Next Tuesday.
Bob's not gonna be there at Thursday.
Huh?
So you're okay with that? So you can have your discussions Thursday, we can have a group discussion on Tuesday.
If between then, now and then, could be now and next Tuesday, you come up with a recommended allocation of the salaries to the accountant and the accountant clerk, would you be kind enough to forward it to us?
Definitely, I don't see that happening.
No, I don't, we don't see that happening, it's too early, because we've, because we've got advertised position yet.
You got somebody in line?
Right, but budgeting it in the actual...
We need somebody, what, right now, what we're doing is gonna try to get somebody in on interim basis.
Right, that's what I'm asking you.
Yeah, an interim, we've, we've got some ideas, but nothing's concrete yet.
Me personally, Beth, I would use, I would use a two-hour amount, I would use the clerk amount, ten, fifteen hours, and use the rate that we're paying currently.
Okay.
That's just my recommendation.
And was that, was that salary previously based off of thirty-six hours? Just so that I can break out the account?
I've heard thirty-five.
Yeah, it was based on thirty-five, I think.
Thirty-six.
See, that's, I've always been on the assumption it's thirty-five, so thirty-six.
Isn't the salary about forty-three thousand or a little bit over that?
Oh no, it's more than that, fifty-one.
No, you're fifty thousand for the town accountant?
Yes.
Yes.
We just checked it tonight.
Yeah, fifty thousand, fifty thousand, one fifty.
Yeah.
I didn't realize it was that much.
Just divide that, divide that by thirty-six and we're good. All right, I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn nine-thirty-seven.
So what do we mean, so you, you wanna hold this to Tuesday, huh?
Tuesday night, yeah.
Tuesday, it's too late to discuss that.
Okay.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, next Tuesday, not this, not tomorrow.
I'm confused, everybody bring three different levels of spreadsheet with the salary.
Can you...
And whichever, you guys can just pick it out of a pile.
Did you email us an Excel spreadsheet? Do you have an Excel spreadsheet?
I sent it last Thursday, talking about the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have a copy in there.
It's in the big, it's in the big front, is this it?
Yes, I emailed it too, plus I paid a copy. Plus I hit all the tabs, all the important tabs.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
That's it right here.
Well, that's the front though, I just wanted to see it on the computer.
Is it on the, it's on the computer?
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
No discussion?
Someone want a second?
All in favor?
We need to go in the other room, Frankie?
Thank you, everybody.
We all set? Okay.
No.
You wanna go in here for a few minutes? Okay, that's fine.
No, we're done, we're good.
Why don't you just stay here?
You wanna just sit here, guys?
You just stay here.
I'll be right here.
All right, so the motion doesn't care, we're not, we're not adjourned.
He says he feels, he doesn't feel...
No, you wanna stay here, you wanna go?
He's the reason to stay.
He's the reason to stay.
Linda, Linda. Linda. Hey, Steve? Thank you for staying. Linda. No matter what game, I'm gonna win.
What's his fault?
I can cut, David, Linda, I can cut.
I'll talk to you soon, okay? Call me.
I got an old fifteen, I already got three, uh, three, what do you call it, vehicles?
Four.
It's a Chevy.
You know...
Every time I go in, there'll be old boxes.
My eyeball is dying.
Just pass me over that name tag.
What?
I'm gonna, just pass me over that name tag.
Oh, what, you wanna be...
Why?
I'm gonna conduct this.
All right, Barbara, what do you wanna bring forward to the board?
I wanna bring forward the night we're meeting.
Yeah, yeah, please. The night we're meeting, okay, the night we're meeting with...
Because we said Thursday night.
Yes, that's right.
And that blocks out Bob. Who can come back like we did last week on a Friday? Can everybody come back on a Friday?
I'll, I'll come in on a Friday if you all wanna do it.
I physically can come in on a Friday, yes.
Because I would like to include everybody if I, if we can.
Oh, if we're doing Friday instead of Thursday, I am down with that.
Okay.
Because it, it's easier for me for it not to be a work night, frankly. It means I can sleep in the next day, life is good.
I mean, I'd just like it to see us meet on a night, if we possibly could, that everybody could be there.
It's not gonna be a long meeting.
I am working on Friday, but I make no guaran, I'll be here, but I make no guarantees as to my condition.
Fair enough.
Okay.
So this Friday, we're gonna meet as a committee.
This Friday, Marie, make sure you post that, please. At seven, not seven Thursday.
Seven P M.
Thirty.
Well, you're mucking up my date, man.
And the following, following Tuesdays, back with the selectmen.
I'd just like to see everybody there.
You mean to meet yet?
No.
Oh, you said, okay.
Tuesdays and Thursdays, I'm framing you.
All right.
But I'll be a Friday for you.
Okay.
So we can all meet on Friday?
Yes.
Because I think as a board, if we can all meet, all of us meet, and then we'll get this process forward for Tuesday.
So now we get the articles, which is good, last year we didn't have the articles. So now we got them, that's, that's out of the way, so we just gotta kinda go over the...
We've only got one article to discuss.
Right. We'll do that Friday.
Okay.
And we pretty much got the line items done.
And so do you want the line items, do you want the budget recalculated at one percent? Like you say, we voted, I remember the discussion, but I thought we were just...
Well, they didn't need to bring that up, and you know what's gonna happen.
I don't think we should do anything just yet.
Do anything, what, what?
I'm gonna set up the spreadsheet so I can just...
Well, you want to, you want to do it, I'll tell you what, do one and two, how's, how's that sound?
Okay, try that.
One and two.
Well, here's where I'm parked, though, here's where I'm parked. If we already put an extra point four in the budget last year for the leap year, so, and this is where everyone gets confused, what we budget does not necessarily equal wage rate change.
I know that, because of the weeks.
So since we'll have one less workday, we could go, one-six is really two, one is really one point four, okay? Two is really two point four, for all intensive purposes, because of the fact that, or, or the funds that we're allocating could support that much raise, depending on what they and the personnel committee decide as the wage rate. Because at the end of the day, we decide how many dollars are available.
Right.
Them and the personnel committee approve the individual wage rates. So, you know, so that's why I'm asking, do you want one that says a one percent change in budget? Is it a point-six percent change in budget for your one percent raise? Is it a one point six that makes it really a two percent raise? What, how do you want it structured?
Why can't you run two spreadsheets and just have a...
Well, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna set up an auto-calculated, I'm gonna put formulas in and set up an auto-calibrate. The problem is, is on some of the lines where, like, if, if we're, if we're doing a substantive adjustment or merit increase, it blows the calculations out of the water, which is what I ran into last year. Why can't I do two spreadsheets, can I? Yes, is it a pain to keep straight, and then you just have to make sure the right stuff winds up in the right place? Yes.
Well, well, we can just, we can, that's easy to do, we're just, we can label the, the two spreadsheets, one and two, or whatever, or whatever the percentage on each, on, on, on the top of the spreadsheet.
You've got nothing better to do.
So getting back to...
You can have my magic box.
That's your magic box. So getting back to...
You wouldn't wanna give it to me, even I do that box.
Getting back to her question now about the one percent is point oh six.
Right, you're right.
How do you wanna do that?
One percent is one percent, I don't understand.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
It's not, because of the leap year.
No, it's wrong.
I mean, the leap...
It's just, it works out that way.
Because of the, I'm just saying, because of the budget change.
Yeah.
Right.
Last year, it looked like a three point four, but it was a three, so but the, the monies are still in the base, so... How do we manage?
It's crazy.
That's the thing, the money is still in the base.
Well, the money is still in the base budget, but that doesn't mean that their wage rates were adjusted fully to the budget because everyone knew the extra day of pay was in there, so it's not like anyone ran off and gave somebody a three point four percent raise instead of a three.
No, but looking at last year's, what people do is, they look at last year's numbers.
Right.
They don't, they're not even thinking about that point four. They're just looking at that number.
The numbers are in there.
And then we're, and we're suggesting either one or two on top of that. That's all people are looking at. They're not, I think, throwing that in there as much as it is in there, it's just muddying up the waters. They're just looking at last year, this year, one percent, two percent, and that's it. Are you saying when you calculate it out, it's gonna give a percentage, it's gonna, it's gonna give a percentage on the side that says it was a different...
No.
Okay, so it's not even gonna, it's not even gonna show up because it's in the base pay already. I mean, the only way to direct...
So what do, so what do we wanna, what do we wanna vote on as, as far as the increase in the calls? We can do two different, two different, we're gonna do two different spreadsheets, could have two different increases, so you wanna do...
One percent and two percent?
What?
I said one percent and two percent?
Yeah, you could say maybe.
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that.
What, what do you, have you ever suggested?
No, it's fine.
No, what you have to do though is demonstrate to the general public
Yeah, the bigger, the...
what the cost impact of one is.
And actually splitting out the town accountant clerk is gonna make my life easier, because then I can just, I can use a...
So now we're gonna put a line back in for them?
Yeah, because I can use, I can just use a straight calculation for municipal clerk, because that was one of the few that was gonna like, like, make it doing it by a formula kinda screwy.
No, do we wanna stick to, what did we say, thirty-four hundred? Off the top of my head, is that what we allocated for the clerk?
No, I think, I think what we...
It was half of seven...
It was six thousand, seven hundred.
Right, but, but here's the deal. If they're gonna, if they're seriously, we're actually gonna need to go up, not down, because if they're seriously gonna go to, from thirty-six hours to twenty hours on the accountant position, what they just asked was that we reformulate that budget line for the accountant to estimate twenty hours.
So we're gonna have to go up to talk about Friday.
Yeah.
On Thursday.
And they were asking for what, like, they were asking for like thirteen dollars an hour on the clerk, and I think we calculate up from that at a fifteen hour, fifteen hours a clerk and twenty hours of accountant.
Yeah, I think we should talk...
It's gonna come out, it's gonna come out less than what we currently have.
We'll talk about it Friday, I think.
So...
Yeah, we think we have to mull that over a little bit.
Yeah, because I don't know, you know, if the clerk can do the work, that's fine, but if he can't, then we're just...
But is that gonna...
I hate to put it this way, most of what wasn't getting done is not rocket science.
I don't know. I just always, the work wasn't getting done.
What wasn't getting done, it was the day-to-day, transactional, punching the numbers in the box work.
Well, it was a lot of everything.
So...
And nothing got reconciled either.
Well...
That's it, yeah.
Except the bottom line is, the issue is now going away, so... Right, we're gonna move, we're gonna move forward now.
So...
Right.
In fact, this is very fortunate. Well, you know what, this is, who knows? This, this town may need, this lady, whoever they have guiding, this accountant, maybe, maybe more than twenty hours. We don't know.
Well, they're talking about reconstruct, reconfiguring it in that manner. So since they seem to think that that will work, I'm gonna go with it.
I can, I can tell you, I've called a couple of towns that...
Twenty hours, you think that's enough?
I've called a couple of towns, and for towns with this size budget, ins and outs, fairly standard is, is for them to have twenty hours and then a clerk of, for some amount of hours.
Yeah, with no work being done at home.
That has, it has to be all done in this town hall.
I'm just saying.
And no, I'm agreeing with you. That's why I said it's very fortunate as this happened. I'm gonna have to beat it down. Well, how many, how much, how many, do you have, the town accountant in East Brookfield is a little smaller than us. What do they, what is she working down there, twenty hours?
I don't know what she's working. She gets thirteen thousand a year, obviously.
She's getting thirteen thousand.
Oh, well, not town accountant, the treasurer.
Oh, I'm talking about the town accountant.
The town accountant, I don't know.
I'm gonna find it.
She should be able...
We all voted to go by, go past nine, right?
Yes. Someone second that? Whatever. Yeah, yeah, I'll second. Okay, all in favor? Okay. It's a little late.
No.
Beth says no again.
That's always says no.
Ten to ten, can we, it's ten to ten right now. Alright, so Friday, alright, so Friday, we're gonna discuss that, a couple articles, and then we'll finalize this, what we, the town accountant figures, whatever they, I'll talk to Steve and Linda, see what they wanna put in. Work on the thirty-five.
Well, if you're talking to Steve and Linda, then it's a serial conversation with two, with a, with a, with the preponderance of the selectmen.
Alright, so I'll talk to Steve then.
Thank you.
Just so I get one. I just wanna get some kind of input. Just get the thirty-five, twenty and fifteen. Work off that. Well, I'll ask him if that's what they're gonna do.
Well, that's what he said.
That's what he said. Okay, they didn't seem like they were too sure on it.
I don't know. That seemed pretty solid to me, but...
She just got finished saying comparable challenges. The town accountant may need a few more hours when she first come, or he...
Well, no, you know what, honestly, what they really should do is fund anything that's like a book reconciliation. We should, and actually, that's the one thing probably missing off the article that should be there, is to allow funds from that audit account to be used for, for any third-party help that they need to balance the books.
And we're also gonna have to have a town audit done now.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely on board with that. See where we're at. And that will also help the town, the new town accountant, and she, or her, when they come in. Well, that follows suit the recommendation we made. If anybody leaves, we do an audit, right? Yeah. Okay, fine. Can we go home now, please? Okay, someone make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, Bob.
So we can...
Motion to adjourn.
Don't, don't talk too much in class Thursday night.
Barbara, you should second that? Hey, yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, everybody in favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's awful when you can't talk.
I gotta teach on Wednesday.
I know.